Good evening. This is the Select Board and Licensing Commissioners session for the Town of North Andover on Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, and we are in open session. I'd like to call over to the meeting and begin with a Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're all kind of smiling here. This is the first time we've been in so closely together here the way we used to be, and we've got folks really here in session, so I'm much appreciated, and that's a very good step for us as a community. So, thank you for all being here. We will begin with public comment.
Just one more interruption. The projection of your minds is not coming back here yet, so just if you guys can try and speed up because during COVID we had to disconnect that all.
Okay.
Things weren't working. So, for tonight only, can you just project a little bit?
Yes, sir. Got it. Thank you, Brian. So, we'll start with public comment. Did we get any submissions of public comment, Town Manager?
Mr. Chair, I do not believe there's any public comments.
Any public comment from folks in the room? All right. Well, thank you. So, we now will move our first item is a joint meeting with the Planning Board for an update on the Royal Crestal Chair.
Okay, so I'm going to call to order the June 8th, 2021, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Our meeting is actually going to be a hybrid meeting, so I'm just going to read this statement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation. A number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted both in person and via remote participation. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel 8, Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. In-person attendance of members of the public and board members is permitted, and every effort will be made to ensure that members of the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means if they choose to do so. In the event that we are unable to do so despite our best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording transceptor other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible. If any members of the public would like to participate in any public hearings, though we're not having any tonight, you can do so by emailing your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to jenright@northandoverma.gov. If there's anything new that comes up and people want to submit questions or comments, we will take those up most likely at our next meeting after town meeting. The question or comment will be addressed at that time. Could we do a roll just for the record to see who's here? You don't have a microphone, so I'll do it. I'll do everybody's job tonight, Gene. All right. Is Peter here?
Here.
Is Kelly here?
Here.
John?
Here.
John's here. He's next to me. Aaron?
Here.
And I am here. So, everyone is here other than Kate for the record, and she has recused herself as an abutter to the potential Royal Crest development. Okay, I think we're good.
Great. Thanks. Appreciate everybody's patience.
If I could just set the table and then we should welcome representatives here from Royal Crest. So, town staff has obviously been working on this project for a while. We've been listening to the planning board meetings, reading and hearing the public comments, working with the zoning working group, and one of the things that we've continued to hear, I think, from really everyone involved with the project is that we all thought the project was too dense, that there was just too much density, too many sites onsite. So, we did a bunch of different analysis and approached the developer and made the recommendation that they cut 33% from their non, basically by right, plan. So, we asked them to keep the 40B whole because we need the 40B, right, and that number of units that they are proposing basically get us to our 10%. And we said that we didn't feel that they needed at this time to do anything with the dorms because we recognized that the need for the dorms were there, and if they weren't going to be built onsite, they would be built at a different site because they need the 1,000 beds. What we asked them to do was to cut 33% from everything that would fall within the master plan program. So, that basically was the market rate multifamily, the OR55 age restricted, and the townhouses. And that basically would be a 20% decrease from the total program, but 33% from what would come before a town meeting. And so, we came forward to them with a couple of different proposals on ways we thought they could do that. And basically, what we did was we created a proforma based on the tax revenue and what the impacts of the project would be. They took that, what we brought to them, and brought forward this plan, which is slightly different from what we proposed, but basically is a counter offer. And it would be a reduction of 332 units, which is 33% of the master plan site or 20% of the entire project, which is what we had at first recommended as a starting point. And so, they are here tonight to introduce this to the planning board and the select board, and we're doing it collectively because it affects everybody. We thought that it would be important for everyone's opinions to be heard in this conversation. And so, this is where we're starting. You know, I think that it's great progress, and I'm looking forward to hearing from them and also hearing from all of you where we think our next path should be. Okay? So, we have, at least I see Jim Keefe and Mike Lozano here from Trinity. If you wouldn't mind welcoming them to the...
I appreciate it. If you gentlemen would like to give us a little more insight to how you came to these calculations and what the considerations are that you want us to discuss tonight.
They haven't been in public with us for a while, so they're probably nervous like they all are. They're going to be going with you, so.
Let me make it real simple. We were told to do it. I started this process three years ago. That was a gas explosion ago. It was a change in administrations ago, and I'm happy to say it was a pandemic ago. And it has been a long process, and it's been, I think, a very constructive one. I've said this before, and I'll say it again, I'll say it again a million times, the planning board has spent a lot of time, a lot of late nights, hearing different aspects of this project and asking very tough questions, and hopefully we've been able to answer those. But I can't express our gratitude for all the time and effort that the town has invested in this project. Having said that, you know, the challenge was three years ago when we were encouraged to take a hard look at Royal Crest, that, you know, you have an operating asset that's, you know, 100% occupied and a housing market that, in Massachusetts, given the shortage of housing we have, that's generating a lot of cash, and therefore it's worth a lot of money. So, the proposition was, if we're going to tear that down, we have to come up with a land value that's equal to that, at least equal to that in cost, in value, I'm sorry, in value, compounded by the fact that we're going to have to demolish 50 buildings, which are, Mr. Flatley, when he built it, loved the use of asbestos, apparently. It's everywhere in the buildings. It's not a danger to the residents, but when you start poking around and doing what you need to do, it has to be treated very carefully as a classified substance. So, the estimates for that alone have been 25 and 35 million bucks. Just to, okay, so we've got the permits, now we have to flatten that out. On top of that, we have to build infrastructure. We're going to be building the roads and the sidewalks, the streetlights, and the open space. We're going to be dealing with a historic problem with drainage runoff. We're going to have to make a pretty extensive effort to contain that on our site, which is another kind of extraordinary cost. On top of that, this is going to be beautiful. We've hired one of the preeminent architectural firms in Elkhurst and Manfredi, and I think we're very early in the process in terms of what these buildings are going to look like, but we're very confident they're going to be beautiful buildings, and that there's a cost premium associated to that. We want this to be a very special place. The, you know, we were, our direction was, you know, if you can somehow help with 40B, the town is vulnerable to an adversarial 40B relationship. I think we've solved that. We can check that box. Merrimack is growing. It's very vibrant. It's rare among colleges of its size to be growing. They have a compelling need for student dorms, which needs to be met for them to continue to grow. We can check that box. The Master Planning Committee outlined a number of things in the town that it wanted to see in new developments between, you know, revitalizing 114, creating more housing, more affordable housing, smart growth kinds of things that are very forward-looking. They're not quite the way things were done 20, 25 years ago in communities like this. And they take into account the whole concept of smart growth, doing more with less. We're dealing with, again, a historic drainage problem that is going to be a benefit to some of the abutters. There are just a whole host of things, and when you add it all up, I think one of the things that the town administrators did for us is give us a kind of a schedule of different options, which would convert into expenses that would be reduced as a result of a decrease in the size of the development. And also, it calculated what the impact would be in the net revenue, net new revenue to the town. And I know that, you know, people would prefer to put that issue aside, and I respect that, but the fact is, one of the missions that we were given very early on is this needed to be an economic development project. It needed to generate net new income for the town. And North Andover isn't unique in terms of needing new revenue. So, I think we've really taken a hard look at that. It's been peer reviewed. I think that it's going to be a significant economic benefit to the town, and I can say that pretty unequivocally. Another issue that came up was traffic. And again, three years ago, you know, whenever we look at something like this, the first thing that comes up in traffic and parking, and, you know, frankly, we are going to be adding a lot of cars to these surrounding road systems. No denying that, although in our revised scheme, the daily trips brought by almost 2,000 cars. I know that's not as many as some people would like. But one of the things that was a happy coincidence is that the state highway department was going to be investing $29 million on Route 14 to make it operate more efficiently, to make it operate more safely, and to increase the capacity. Even though they're not wild, and the highway planners today are not really thrilled about increasing capacity because the more you increase capacity, the more you attract cars. But in this particular case, if those investments weren't made, it would be a hard case to make that we were not going to create havoc with local traffic. Well, our engineers at VHB did extensive studies. That, too, has been peer reviewed by the town, and we're pretty confident, based upon the peer review's conclusion, that we're not going to create, as a result of these improvements, to be sure, but we're not going to create the havoc that people fear. So, when you go through the list of benefits to the town, I think that, when I think back, not knowing what we know now, but remembering what people in this room told us they wanted, I think we have fulfilled most of the things that they wanted. It's new. It's big. It's a lot. People have visceral reactions to that. We understand. But I think as a result of the process that we've gone through, which has been extensive, and it's not over, by the way. I mean, we've still got a lot to do, but I think the process we've gone through has looked at some of the tougher issues, and I think we've come up with a number of mitigation elements to it and a number of thoughtful responses from working very closely with the neighbors in Berkeley Road to, you know, the other stakeholders in town. But, you know, we were hearing over and over and over again, it's too dense. And as much as we need to be mindful that there has to be some kind of economic deal here that's equivalent to what Royal Crest is worth now, the other thing we need to be mindful of is that we're trying to develop this new community that has 50,000 square feet of retail in it. And part of the success of that retail is going to be the, you know, the people that live around it. And the whole concept is this is going to be a walk-in community, that you can go from one part to the other and not have to get into your car, not have to go up Route 114. So, it's a balancing act that we've been struggling with since day one. You know, we've hopefully not been contentious. We hopefully have not been inflexible. Hopefully, we've never given any of the impression that we're not listening. So, I go back to my opening comment that, you know, when we were told this is what you really need to do, you know, that we spent a lot of time thinking about how we could make that work, and hopefully this is a good place. But it wasn't easy. It required a lot of effort on our part. Spent a lot of time with the folks from Aimco last week, but I think we're in a place where this still works for us, and hopefully you'll agree.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
And I would just say, I'm sure you're all very curious about the different scenarios, and I'd be happy to send those to all of you, and we can add them to one of your planning board meetings.
Jim, could you or Mike walk us through the actual changes? And we see the chart, but it'd be nice to, you know, even individually, you know, the chart says reduce from four to three floors. That is where we're talking about. If we could reference the map, that would be great. I don't know if we have that capability today, but if someone could walk us through the actual reductions that are being proposed, I think that would be really helpful.
I'm going to turn it over to Mike Lozano, who's the project manager on this, and this is something he's better answering than me.
Thank you, Jim. Yes. So, I think, you know, just to, you know, provide a preamble to this is, you know, this is an important step. We wanted to get some feedback on the program as we present it here today. We expect to go back to our design team, and then, you know, this is a pretty big, major change to the program. So, we've talked about it. We've, you know, we're not, you know, talking about this in a vacuum. So, we've talked about how it will affect the plan, but they haven't really put pen to paper yet. So, we're going to do that, but these are the suggested, these are the things we've talked about, the ways that the plan will change as it's reflected in this program. So, you know, generally, we like the plan, and, you know, when we've walked through the, we had the site visit with the board a couple of weeks ago, and I think the plan itself, the essence of the plan would remain. But we've heard a lot of comments. We've heard about, you know, building heights. We've heard about density. We've heard about the way the buildings interact with some of the streets and the buffers. So, we're looking at ways to address those comments, and those are things that we're going to be doing in the coming weeks. But as it relates to this program, you know, as Melissa indicated, Town Manager indicated, the 40B elements, the 40B buildings that are in the plan, those would stay essentially the same as they've been proposed. The market rate multifamily would see a fairly significant reduction. So, in general, those buildings, as they're indicated on this spreadsheet, would reduce in height from, in some cases, from five floors to four floors, in one case, from five floors to three floors, and in a couple of other cases, from four floors to three floors. But in general, those buildings would get less dense.
Is that all of them?
That is all of those buildings. But again, we haven't fully designed it yet, but yes, all of those buildings would essentially be reduced in size. And then the...
Eitan, can we ask questions now, or should we hold them?
I'd say hold them until, even though I just did. So, from now on, we're going to hold them until he's done, and then we'll go, okay?
I'd like to have one final question.
Well, that's just my board. You can do whatever.
I appreciate that, Eitan.
The structure of this document, so I see, and maybe I'm misreading it, but I see a retail column, and then I see a row for multifamily with 28,000 square feet. How do those two cross? Why am I seeing 28,000 under retail multifamily?
Well, because those are mixed use buildings, so the retail is on the ground floor of those buildings.
Gotcha. Okay. So, that's how I read each one of those rows.
That's how you read each one of those rows. So, the proposed new program are sort of the central columns here, and just for reference, our original proposed plan and the associated metrics are on the right. So, you can see what we originally proposed and how we're proposing to reduce certain elements to address the concerns about density. And so, the plan is that, you know, we get some feedback about the density, and then we can go back and apply it to the plan, and then we can come back and, you know, really go into the details about how we address all the comments that we've gotten about, you know, setbacks and sizes of buildings and how the elevations, you know, interact with the surroundings. So, essentially, the 40B elements stay the same. The market rate multifamily sees a fairly significant decrease. So, the original proposal on those, for that element of the plan, was for 608 residential units. We are now proposing, in this proposal, 439 units, so a reduction of 169 units. Commensurately, a reduction in square footage for that collection of buildings by 181,000 square feet, so a pretty substantial reduction. On the age-restricted 55-plus elements of the plan, we've reduced from 135 units to 35 units. And again, that was an element of one of the options that the town presented to us. So, you know, we felt that the age-restricted housing is still an important element, but is one that perhaps could be reduced in size to address the density questions and comments. The townhouses, we originally proposed 263. The new proposal is for 200, so we're in a reduction of 63. That results in a reduction of 137,000 square feet. And one of the things that we expect that to allow us to do in a reconfigured plan is to increase what is already a pretty large buffer, but increase that even more away from the surrounding neighborhood. So, there will be even more, you know, undisturbed woodland between, you know, our buildings and the surrounding property lines. The student housing would stay the same size of an equivalent of 250 units or 1,000 beds, which is the need that Merrimack has. But we've heard a lot of comments about that particular set of buildings and how it interacts with the neighborhood and some of the surrounding houses. So, our team is redesigning that building so it stays essentially the same size, but it moves the buildings further away from the property line. It preserves more of a buffer, and it lowers in height in some places so that it's completely, you know, more or less invisible to the surrounding neighborhood.
Excuse me. So, could you explain to me, so you have the 55 and older, and then you have the dorms. So, are you referring to the proximity between, you keep saying the neighborhood, but are you referring to the proximity of the 55 and older units that are, would be priced at what, please? Could you tell me? Do you have that offhand? I think it was, was it 750,000 or something like that?
Well, those are the townhouses. So, there's a townhouse element that would be largely for sale. The age-restricted housing would be rental and part of, you know, sort of the overall rental package of units available.
So, how close are they in proximity to these 1,000 beds of college students?
So, the plan, they're in relatively close proximity. The dormitory or student housing building is directly across the street and lines up with the Merrimack campus. So, that was sort of the primary reasoning for its placement. It's adjacent to what we're calling the New Town Green. You know, the rest of the elements of the plan are, you know, arranged around that.
Is that what you were referring to, that you were taking another look at?
No, I think what Mike's referring to is that, at least when we did the site visit, the dorms were very close to 114. And so, it's a couple of houses along 114, and then Warren Berkeley is how close the dorms were to that. Like, that was, at least when I went out there, the one stake that I was like, whoa, that is way too close to the road, and where the new sidewalk is going to be, was the corner of the dorm. So, one of the things at one of the planning board meetings that I think pretty much universally was said was that's a little too close to that. There's good trees there, but that's still a little too close to the road. So, shifting those as compared to the buildings that are currently on 114 and on Berkeley Road rather than any internal.
Yes, that's right.
Again, I'm still not clear. So, how close will they be to the dorms?
So, the surrounding houses are approximately 140 feet at a minimum away from the dormitory building. So, there's approximately only 140 feet between the closest element of the building to the property line along Berkeley Road. We were very sensitive, from the very beginning, we've been very sensitive to make sure that there is a substantial buffer between any of the buildings that we're proposing and the property line and the neighborhoods of Berkeley Road, Quail Run, and Montero Way. We were very sensitive about that.
Just a point of affirmation, the dorm building was much closer to those three houses on that were on 114.
Yes.
The other thing is that next to getting closer to the residential properties...
Can he share the microphone? Because people at home are not going to hear, John.
Next, and the parking lot that's associated with the dormitories is closer to the residence on Berkeley Road than 140 feet. So, it's not going to be 140 feet of open space between them and Berkeley because the parking lot, it may, you know, I don't know what it is, but it's well less than 100. So, just for context.
And so, we've heard a lot of comments about that. So, we are redesigning the student housing building to make sure that it's further away from our initial proposal because we know that there is a lot of sensitivity. There is a lot of comments about its proximity to those three houses and to Berkeley Road. So, we are redesigning it so that it's further away, and we are also redesigning that parking lot so that it is more sensitive to that exact condition as well. So, we will be presenting that to you, and we're hopeful that we'll get positive feedback on that.
Thank you.
And that, you know, more or less, you know, describes the program changes that we're proposing. Again, to reiterate, we originally, as far as unit, residential unit equivalents are concerned, there's different housing types, obviously, but the original proposal was for 1,641 units. This new proposal that we are coming forth with is 1,309 units, so a substantial reduction of 332 units. It also results in approximately, and again, we have to go through, you know, the redesign of the buildings, but it results in an approximately 439,000 square foot reduction. So, that directly translates to density. And then, if you take into account a reduction in the parking structures associated with the plan, it's closer to 600,000 square feet of a total reduction in built, you know, built density on the site that we're proposing. And as Mr. Keefe mentioned, you know, the reduction in units also brings with it a reduction in all sorts of other impacts like traffic, schoolchildren, and other things that we are continuing to analyze.
Could you show us, could we use the map from the balloon test, maybe, just to show us which buildings you're talking about having reductions on? Again, I know we're not going to get the exact numbers for each one, and the dorm building, which you're looking to reorient.
Yep, absolutely.
Just, I think that would help people.
So, while Gene's pulling up the map, just for context, when we first brought this forward, we were very clear. We could not find town meeting, the planning board, or the select board with any of the conversations that we were having. But one of the things that we wanted to be really careful about was we didn't want to say, we want you to cut 332 units and then have it be maybe all the townhouses, right? We wanted to make sure that we weren't going to do something that was going to kind of throw the fiscal impact report upside down, which is why we brought forward several different scenarios to look at in order to make certain that we wouldn't be increasing the burden on the taxpayer rather than decreasing. So, just a little. And again, I'm happy to share those scenarios with everyone.
Mike, quick question, just for the people at home that may not understand the concept of 40B. Can you describe how many of the units within the mixed-income 40B multifamily would be market rate and what would be the subsidized affordable portion that would be available?
Yes. So, of the 40B component, which is in three different buildings, there would be a total of 385 units, all of which would count towards the town's affordable housing inventory. It would account towards the town's obligation under 40B. Of those 385 units, 289 would be market rate, and 96 would be affordable.
So, these would be located in several buildings, the market rate?
Yes. But the affordable units would be indistinguishable. They would be interspersed within those buildings, so they wouldn't be all in one building. They would not be sort of, there wouldn't be one building that's just affordable and the rest of the buildings market rate. They'd be totally interspersed throughout the property. They would be totally indistinguishable from any other of the... They would be totally indistinguishable from any other of the apartments.
And because you're counting them, all these are rentals?
That is correct.
And what's the height of the building E? Is that five stories or?
So-
In the new proposal?
So the plan is up on the screen now. So, um, so building E is currently, the, half of it is currently five stories and the other half is four stories. You know, we're contemplating that that is the, one of the buildings that will be reduced in order, you know, have a, a reduction in the number of units. So it's possible to reduce it either in height or in footprint or a combination, once we go through the plan. We do think that there, you know, is a, um, is a nice element to have in a little bit more height, sort of, um, framing this town green element, this new open space. So, and, and we walked the, the planning board through onsite as, you know, where our taller buildings, our five-story buildings would go. We do think that, um, there's some real benefits to having a little bit more height, five-story buildings around that town green to sort of frame it and to provide, you know, a nice architectural, um, element at that sort of central, uh, gathering space on the site. So that's something that we're, we're looking to preserve. But in general, you know, a lot of the buildings would be able, like I mentioned, would be able to be reduced in height, be reduced in footprint in some ways, and in general, the density would be reduced pretty significantly. So on this plan, um, the, the original plan, for example, uh, building F, uh, which is one of the, um, I believe easternmost buildings-
It's hard to read, um- So could you color code us a little bit, so building F is which color?
Yeah, so it's, it's the darker orange and yellow on the right side of the plan. That had been contemplated, half of that building, the yellow part of that building, had been contemplated to be five stories. In this version, or a, a future version of the plan, we expect that to go down to four stories. Building G, which is the one immediately behind that and a little bit closer to the hillside neighborhood, that had been five stories. We're proposing that that would go down to three stories. And the five-story buildings, as, as, as we noted when we were out onsite, the five-story buildings are still below the height of the tree line onsite. So, um, reducing from five to three stories will, again, essentially make that building invisible to, um, to the abiding neighborhood.
Five-story buildings are how tall? Maybe what probably knows that?
Uh, they're approximately sixty-five feet tall.
And houses are generally, at the most, thirty-five?
Correct. The trees, the trees onsite, the existing mature trees are, you know, around ninety to a hundred and ten feet tall.
Oh, shit.
There is, well, there's a pretty good mix. There's a pretty good mix. There's a lot of pines. And, and to address that comment, we know that there was, you know, and, and we like a lot of the existing trees. Our, our team is, you know, doing a survey of all the trees on the site, and we're making a, a real concerted effort to save, you know, significant trees within, within the site, not just on the perimeter, where we're gonna be saving the vast majority of them, but within the, the, the center portions of the site. We're making a real effort to, um, to preserve as many of the mature trees as we can. And we have our landscape architect working on that now.
Um, I'm a very visual person. Do you have any sites similar to this that we could go drive and take a look at? I know what every layout is different, of course, especially with all the components that you have here, but I was just curious.
That is a good question, and I would ask that-
You look stumped. I thought, oh, well, I guess I asked the bad question.
Oh, well, I would ask that we follow up with some examples.
Fair enough.
Kelly, Peter, go ahead. Peter, why don't you go first?
Yeah, um, to Rosemarie's point, uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, very much.
He's such a quiet person, generally. Thank you.
Uh, to the last point, uh, you know, the numbers, uh, these new numbers, these reductions in density are very helpful. Um, I think, uh, mission to recommending some similar developments elsewhere, really would be helpful to have some, uh, sketches and, uh, digital images and view perspectives of, um, what the actual structures will look like. And, I mean, we normally get this for developments, but, you know, similar to what we did for the Amazon proposal and, and others, um, what are the, uh, what are the view perspectives from one fourteen? What are they from, uh, the different neighborhoods, um, with the, the actual buildings as intended? I think it's something that, uh, we really would want to see.
Yes, we, we agree. We agree. And, you know, the intent was, if we were to get, um, some feedback from, from this meeting, you know, our, our design team is prepared to put together, you know, an extensive package of, you know, an updated plan that reflects all the changes that we've been talking about, but also the other ones, including, you know, the setbacks on Route one fourteen and some of the other sort of planned changes, but also to give, um, a much better idea of how these buildings will actually look. So, you know, we've been talking about ways to be able to present that, not only to these boards, but to the general public, to the neighbors, so that everyone can really, you know, we, we've done that for the previous plan, and we have a pretty good package of things, but we know that we need more, so we're gonna put that together, and we'll be able to, um, from this meeting, we expect to be able to, uh, to enroll that soon, so that everyone can sort of see, uh, and, and experience what, what, what it'll feel like once this is actually built.
Just on that point, Peter, so I, I, I agree with Peter, I think we need that, I think you guys obviously need to come up with the plans first.
Yeah.
Then we need to see those. And we also, I know, for the Knights of Columbus project, you know, we actually went out and, and the developer went out and got permission to go in people's yards to be able to actually get as accurate of a representation as they could. So, you know, there's work to do to, to make that happen, but it, it, it needs to happen to-
Yes.
To make this a reality. Okay, Kelly?
Uh, yeah, yes, thank you. So, question, and I'm sorry if this was answered in the explanation on other people's questions, but I just wanna make sure I understand. So are, are the buildings still staying as close to one fourteen as we saw during the onsite?
So-
Or did they move back?
So we're studying that now. We do expect there to be revisions on the setbacks on Route one fourteen. You know, we haven't designed it yet, so we're still, we wanna go back to our experts, have them look at this, you know, holistically, so we're making sure that we're, you know, designing it all together and making sure that we're taking all the variables into, into account. But we have heard, we have heard, um, and, and heard loud and clear that there's concerns about the setbacks on one fourteen, so we expect there to be revisions there.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. 'Cause I know that was, um, certainly seeing those markers put in place, um, you know, between, uh, one fourteen and, you know, where, where the dorm would start, as well as those other buildings, not just the dorms, the other ones as well. It was extremely close, and kind of imagining what that would look is coming into North Andover and kind of sort of almost a tunneling effect.
Yep.
Um, you know, on one fourteen.
Yes.
Seeing what that changes would be, would be fantastic.
Yeah, and, and we know that there were concerns about needing to see what that experience is coming up, sort of, you know, Route one twenty-five, you know, and, you know, how, we know that, that this is a gateway to town, and that it's important that, um, that, that people be able to see what it will look like. So our team's prepared to put those visuals together.
Great, thank you. Um, so the other question is looking at the reduction of, of the, the plan that showed the reduction in units. I was trying to understand kind of the impact of the reduction, the larger, the reduction in number of units, and trying to see what that would mean to the reduction in number of people in residence and density, and understanding, you know, how many, you know, more people from today-
Yes.
-would be there, 'cause I think that's, that's a lot of, as we think about community impact, it's the number of residents, not necessarily the number of units. So how many people and how many school-aged children? Do you know that?
That, we do not know that right this second, but we will know that. We're gonna continue to analyze that, and we'll be able to follow up with that answer.
Following up on that question, um, in slightly different light, so do we have a number of the number of vehicles when everything is in full steam, um, that would be on that site between residents, dorms, retail?
Yes.
I think you get where I'm at.
Fifty thousand nine hundred and seventy-three is the number of trips proposed.
That's the previous-
That's the pre-
Minus nineteen eighty-one.
But that's the vehicle trips. I think you're asking the number of vehicles, right?
Well, actually, both, both scenarios would be, would be of interest.
So, so we did, we have had our engineer, VHB, our traffic engineer, has put together an analysis on the total vehicle trips. I'm sure we can get the actual number of vehicles that are expected to be onsite. But as far as the vehicle trips are concerned, the previous plan was fifteen thousand, and this is a daily twenty-four, over a twenty-four hour span, was fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-three. This new plan that we're proposing is thirteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-two. So it's a reduction of almost two thousand total vehicle trips. And as, as-
I think, oh, I'm sorry. I think what would be really helpful is to see, not, because those numbers, it's not net new, right? There's already, uh, trips today. So it'd be great to be able to see just what's the net new with the current, you know, with the new proposed plan.
Yes.
So that way, we're looking at really, what's the change from what we're all experiencing today versus the total possible number?
Yep.
Yeah, I expect the chart that we have ongoing that will be supplemented to-
Yes.
Use this.
Yes.
Which we have all that data. So there is a chart in one of the planning board, uh, meetings that actually has all the data to date of how many people, how many cars, also comparing that to how many are currently there, how many units are currently there, how many are proposed, all of it, we've added every meeting. So there's, does that chart exist? And I assume that this data will, once more finalized, will be added to that for the actual kind of final proposal.
Hey, Tom?
Yep.
Hey, Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna echo that, uh, I, I was gonna ask the same thing. We should take that chart, which was sort of our delta chart.
Yep.
Here's the delta in, in more than just vehicles, people, units, vehicles, et cetera. We had, uh, a number of measures. I'd really like to see, here's the deltas for the original proposal, and here's how that changed with these modifications. You know, just back of the envelope here, uh, I think the reason that that's very important for us to see, you know, we have a twenty odd percent total reduction in units here, and at least what we've heard so far is that yields a twelve percent reduction in daily vehicle trips. So all very much worth, uh, looking at, and having that updated chart will be very helpful.
And I think for the people at home, I know some of this information is in front of us, but it's important to state it publicly so people at home can hear.
Yeah.
Um, 'cause they, they're not studying the charts.
Yeah, and, and we agree. And again, this, this was sort of meant to be a point where, you know, hopefully we get some good feedback on the direction where this is going, but obviously, our engineers, our designers, our fiscal impact consultants will have to update all of the reports that they've done. Those were all based upon the previous plan, and these are pretty substantive material changes that we're talking about here. So we have to update all of the work, so, uh, which we're, we're, we're prepared to do, and we're going to do. And, you know, we'll certainly summarize all of the work that's already been done. We'll be able to show the existing Royal Crest and its, you know, sort of current state, the sort of impacts from the current Royal Crest, the original plan that we proposed, and this new propos, this, this new proposal that we're before you with, and you can see how it's chan, how it's changing.
We did start to calculate some of the fiscal pro forma. Um, we were kind of waiting for a little bit more direction before we undertook the entire thing. But to answer Kelly's question, um, it's, the original proposal was two hundred and thirty-four school-aged children. Under this proposal, it's two hundred and six.
Yes. And just for reference, the existing Royal Crest today, there's two hundred and thirteen school-aged children.
So is that anything-
So you're expecting a reduction in the number of school-aged children with this? So you're, you're, you're saying that the impact to our school system will be less by nine, eight, what, four, seven?
No, okay. That's two hundred and six net, or two hundred and six total?
Total.
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 Did I understand that correctly? They're say, they're, they're expecting to have seven less kids than today?
Yes, that is correct.
There'll be a few more students within the forty B. There'll be less students in the market rate, and obviously, less students in the townhouses.
That's right.
So we've begun the analysis, and I'm happy, again, happy to share all of that, too. Basically, what it does for revised tax income, what the new operating income would be, uh, we've started all of that. The only thing that we haven't really done is started to look at, um, the impact on other departments. Um, obviously, it will be lessened as well, but, uh, we wanted to look at the, the big picture numbers to start, so.
And, and that's a, a function, to a large degree, of the unit composition, right?
That's right.
Taking down three units and also creating opportunity for Studio Ones, where now you have people who want those, there's-
Exactly right.
-over demand for a limited supply, so that-
That's exactly right.
Absorbs that, right?
Yes. The existing Royal Crest today is all two- and three-bedroom units. There are no studios or one-bedrooms or any units for smaller households.
I, I agree with that. There is a, people, you know, they can't afford one- and two-bedroom apartments, but they want their own space, so it's really, there is a need, whether they are young people or people that are, um, you know, just need less space as they get older. So I, I think that's a really good point. This is just tossing this out. So many colleges and universities, um, sometimes restrict vehicles to maybe to the freshman class or things like that. Is that something that is being, I'm just tossing it out for food for thought, um, as to who's going to be, what age or what year, freshman, sophomore, whatever, and would there be potentially a restriction on vehicles? But you do have to weigh that against the fact that they might take their car to go across the street, adding to the traffic. So it's sort of a complex scenario, but-
It's a, it's a question for Merrimack, but we do expect there to be some restrictions. They do charge for parking, and we do, that we do expect them to have some restrictions on parking for their students.
Okay.
If they were taking a car across the street, there's no place to park.
That's true, too. That's part of the problem. Right.
So, oh, go ahead, no, you go ahead. I was just gonna piggyback on the parking and the cars going across to Merrimack. I think the big concern, really, and I know it's between you and Merrimack and Mass DOT, is getting these thousand kids across one fourteen and doing it safely. And you want the kids that are living on Merrimack to come over and shop, right? Like, we want that, you want that connectivity, and we wanna make sure they do that safely.
Yes.
And I know that the word "overpass" gets thrown around a lot. We really need to focus on that, 'cause we've already had fatalities on one fourteen. And the kids, it has to be convenient, 'cause they're not gonna walk down from their dorms to cross over, and I know you know that. It just, we need to say it, because it's really important.
So I asked Mass DOT twice, and twice they were like, never gonna happen? Just, just so you know.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I know.
Oh.
And I- And we, we did talk about it a bunch, and John brought up some, you know, examples of Villanova and other places that have them, and it is a very appealing idea, and it was basically shot down once out of hand, twice out of, yeah, we looked at it, it's not gonna happen. Just, just, I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just telling, telling you what-
Right. So does then the responsibility come back to Merrimack and to the town and to, to Trinity?
To make it-
To make it a safe, you know, so-
What are the other options?
What are the other options?
The most important, as far as I'm concerned, is safety.
And the ability of the kids to go there.
So we, we agree one hundred percent that safety is absolute, it's totally unsafe today. I mean, anybody who has tried to walk across that street, or even along that street, knows it's, it's certainly unpleasant, and it's not safe. But that's one of the things that I know that Mass DOT is very, very focused on. We are very focused on it. Merrimack is very focused on it. So the, the primary entrance to the site will have a new signalized intersection that doesn't exist today. Essentially, where the Hawk Light is today will be a new signalized intersection. We've, we've, our designers have worked really hard, our traffic engineers, our civil engineers have worked with Mass DOT to make sure that that intersection is designed with pedestrian safety and comfort is in mind, and that, you know, it's safe to, for all the pedestrians to cross at that location while at the same time maintaining traffic flow. So right now, all of the traffic studies that have been done, which is quite extensive, takes that into account. They've been ultra-conservative with that, so they, they have treated it as if somebody is going to press the button for a walk signal at every single cycle over twenty-four hours. So the traffic studies take that into account. That's never gonna happen. Like, even with a lot of students crossing that road, there are going to be- crossing that road, there are going to be some cycles where people are not going to be there or, or not walking. So we expect traffic to flow smoothly through that, through that intersection. We've also confirmed with Mass DOT that they are going to be implementing smart signal technology to make sure that it monitors the amounts of traffic, as well as the pedestrian signals, to make sure that it, it, it flows smoothly. But, but we think, we think with Mass DOT's plans and our plans, that the situation is going to get drastically better than exists today. And the other thing, like, the sidewalks on 114, where they exist, are not very pleasant. They're narrow. They're right against the road. You know, we're working with Mass DOT on our frontage, which is over two thousand feet long. It's like, over a third of a mile long, that the sidewalk is set back from the street, that there's a landscaped buffer between the street and the sidewalk, and the sidewalk will be more and twice as wide as, than exists today.
How many pedestrian signals do you anticipate? Because I've had, I think at one of our previous meetings, I heard multiple, and then you kept repeating one. So do you, and then your second statement, you said multiple, I think, so I'm curious.
So there's a new intersection, essentially where the Hawk Light is, which would be the main entrance into the site, and then the intersection at the bypass, which is kind of crazy today, but that's going to be completely reconfigured and will be another place with full pedestrian crossings, which don't really exist in, in a very sensible fashion today.
So you're saying two?
So there'll be two.
But that's the Mass DOT.
And that's the Mass DOT, yes.
That's not your point.
Yes, that's right. Mass DOT is doing that. But there'll be two, there'll be two locations that you can cross from Royal Crest to the Merrimack side.
With full stoplights.
Aton?
Full stoplights, exactly.
Well, you have none today.
Aton?
That's exactly.
Yeah. Just one second, Peter. Janice?
Okay.
Janice looks like she's itching to say something.
It's okay.
Are you sure? Go ahead.
Yeah. No, safety, truly, I don't feel, I mean, I think that will come as the plan is developed. I appreciate all of the hard work everybody has done to get to this point, but I still feel like we are miles away from something acceptable, especially with very little information about safety. I appreciate two crosswalks, but we all know college students aren't going to walk to the crosswalks across the street, and that is really concerning. So I look forward to hearing more about how you're going to protect those residents, who we really do desperately want to go back and forth. I mean, they have disposable income, probably, and, you know, we want them to feel part of the community. So I, I think that's a big piece that, for me, right now, is missing. So-
Unfortunately, they're not going to go to the crosswalk. They're certainly not going to go over an overpass.
Well, at least some would, is how, I, I mean-
The problem, so, so this was something that, that we talked about a lot at the planning board, and one of the things that pretty much everyone said is, yeah, if, to get an overpass, the amount of distance that you would need would mean that it's like a five or ten-minute walk. And to Dick's point, if a college student is late for class, they're not taking a ten-minute walk over an overpass. They're running across the street, which is what I did in Boston, right. So, but I will say that Mass DOT, while lacking a lot of answers, was pretty clear that they would use the smart technology, was, which is what our peer consultant said is absolutely necessary to mitigate kind of the traffic trips that are being proposed as well. And the other thing that Mass DOT, the big, one of the big things that they're talking about in the project is pedestrian and bike traffic. So they're even overly focused on that, more, they're, they're willing to sacrifice traffic, car traffic, for pedestrian safety and bike traffic, which parents appreciate and, and people in cars may not. So those two things, they're definitely in the discussions. There's just only so much that one group can do without the other.
So just for my own clarification, I'm sure this has been discussed before, but what, um, I forgot what I was, never mind. Move to someone else, I'll come back.
Why don't we do Peter and then Aaron from my board?
Great, thanks, Aton. I want to follow up on the pedestrian bridge discussion, which I really appreciate being addressed again here today. And you're spot on, Aton. We did raise it twice. Mass DOT was part of it. You just reiterated that the problem is, because of the height you need, you'd have to have these ridiculously long ramps to get the necessary height, and the kids are not going to take the time to walk. But even though we raised it twice, I'm really quite concerned that I do not want our discussions to prematurely foreclose potential further consideration of pedestrian bridge solutions in addition to the crosswalks. And I want to give an example. We're not going to design this. We're not designers. But imagine how many different permutations of roadway pedestrian crossings have been developed across the country and around the world over the years. So all I've heard so far is the sort of pedestrian bridge 101, ground-to-ground with long ramps doesn't work. Okay, I got that. But for example, what about a pedestrian bridge that lands at an upper floor of the planned dorm? That would get you the elevation and also proximity, immediate proximity for students late for classes, and then some type of stairwell that brings them up and down. Look, I don't want to design this. I only raised that option to try to make the point that I don't believe that all creative design solutions have been sufficiently explored before we abandon any option for a pedestrian bridge. I really feel strongly that the way the Select Board articulated this earlier tonight, we're going to have a thousand students going across 114 every day, and probably more than that over the course of a day, and we want them to do it. The crosswalks are great. But I think more work is needed to see how we could further ensure safety. And I really think that all options have not yet been explored. Thank you.
Okay, great. Aaron?
Yeah, quick question for Mike or Jim. I know in, in our meetings, planning board meetings, and also in the zoning working group, we've, we've discussed density and buffering. Another portion, at least in the zoning working group, has been the, the permitting process. So I'm wondering if you can clarify Trinity's expectations for how this project is permitted?
So the, the way we've been expecting it, which is consistent with the discussions that we've had, is that, you know, the master plan would be approved along with the rezoning at town meeting. But there would be, there would be provisions within that zoning overlay that would require that we take each element of the plan back before the planning board, so that the planning board can review all of the elements through a normal course that they would typically review to make sure that each element is consistent with the master plan that is approved at town meeting. So you would see full landscape plans, you would see full lighting plans, you would see every element that you would typically see in an application before you. It would just, it would be more for consistency with the master plan rather than, say, you seen it for the first time.
But just a quick qualification, Aaron, if you don't mind if I jump in, is what you're saying is, our, our, well, practically, that is site plan review. You do want to have site plan review. Your preference is to have almost informal meeting, informal meeting that has no regulatory impact, correct?
It would be site plan, it would essentially be site plan review. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be special permit necessarily.
Well, it's a special permit. That's the way it exists today. So you're saying is, it's not site plan review because it has no permit implications at all?
Well, it, it would. It would have to be consistent. It would have to be absolutely consistent with the master plan.
So I've been in the meetings, but I'll just jump in, that other municipalities, when they do site plan review, don't have it as a special permit. They have it as a site plan review permit. So it doesn't have all the special permit criteria, but it does have differing criteria that you have to meet, similar to what we have for our site plan special review permit. So you can't really say no as to the uses and things like that, but you can deny it in certain situations as to things like that.
Well, right. But I, I, I think my point is, and we're getting into inside baseball here, is that our site plan review permit is pretty benign, Martin. You could, you can't deny the use, practically speaking, unlike some special permits where it's only allowed, the use is allowed. My, my point is that things are going to change. I mean, this is, I think, the broader picture of what Aton's saying, is that this project is a ten-year build-out. I just about guarantee something's going to change from when the thing starts to end.
John, could you speak into the mic if, so people can hear you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Something's going to change from the, when the thing starts to when it ends. It's just the market changes. Any number of things could change. So the question becomes, what is something that's subject to this site plan review proxy, and what is something that is basic, we have to go back and rezone, I guess?
Yeah. If there are material changes to the master plan, and there could be, like, exactly like you say, over ten years, there could be changes that we would want and maybe the town would want. But we would, if there were material changes to the plan that's approved at town meeting, we would have to either go for a special permit, which would be a more, you know, robust, a more robust process, or we would have to go back to town meeting. But so that's, that's, you know, but if it's consistent with the master plan that's approved by town meeting, you know, you'd go through a site plan review to make sure it's consistent and have that control. But, you know, we would be able to build it the way that the master plan is.
So, I mean, in terms of feedback, I think this new plan is definitely more in line with our discussions at the planning board. I know I've said over and over again, the things that I was concerned about were proximity of the buildings to 114 buffers between the existing neighborhoods and the proposed buildings. The board has, you know, had significant concerns about the density, you know, and so those, all those three things have been addressed. You keep the affordable housing, which I think is important. And I think, so I think it's definitely in line with what the feedback from the public that we've been getting. I'm not sure if it goes far enough for everybody, and I don't know that there is anything that ever necessarily will. But I think it's certainly a step in the right direction. So I think the next steps, at least in, in my opinion, in hearing what other people have said today, are to actual get, one, visual mockups, because I think that's going to be really important, and then numerical mockups of what you're actually talking about, right? So if we reduce two hundred units to, I think, Laura's point and to other points that are raised, how many people is that? Because which units are we talking were taken out? What does that do to fiscal impacts? What does that leave us needing in terms of, for the Select Board, you know, in terms, and the town in terms of negotiating a development agreement? What's still out there in terms of problems?
Yeah.
And then, you know, where does this leave us for new traffic data and new fiscal data? And what can we show people who live there especially what their views would look like? Because that's important. I mean, as board members, I think it's important for us to take a look at how this project affects the town as a whole positively and negatively, as well as people who live right there, and to be able to explain that to both constituencies. So that's all I got.
Just back to feedback from, from me. I know we've been working on this working group meeting every Thursday morning, and I think the last time we met, we did, you know, I specifically talked about reducing the density. And I think you guys went back and you sharpened your pencil and you, you took a good swap at it, you know, so I bet it. And, you know, we talked about exactly what Aton was saying. You know, there's a lot of feedback from the community that the project was too dense, and that there was too much, you know, too much impact on the schools, too much impact on traffic, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You, you knew them all. And I think, you know, your plan, you know, is, the new plan is, you know, you heard us, and I think you went back and you, you did what you needed to do to, to reduce it even further from what we originally talked. So, you know, I think, I think we're in the right direction.
Thank you.
I just had a question, maybe, Madam, Tom, Major, you can answer. Why such a reduction in fifty-five plus?
So we brought forward a bunch of different scenarios. Our, our, our big, and, and like I said, I'm happy to share them. Some of them, I think one of them actually weaved out the fifty-five plus entirely. Our big, our big sentiment in moving forward with this was that we really did not want to see, say to, to the developer, "We want you to reduce by three hundred and twenty-two units," and have them come back and say, "We did. We took out all the townhouses," right? That, that was what we were afraid of. And so we also recognized that in order for the project to be fiscally possible, right, there needed to be a certain amount of certain types of, of housing. And so we brought forward many different types of reductions. One of them did have the reduction to thirty-five units of age restricted, and that's the one that they kind of held on to, I think. But we brought forward a lot of different scenarios that we presented to them. We calculated even more than we brought forward to them, just to see what the impacts were. Our, our biggest concern was making sure that we weren't going to make a recommendation or suggestion that would leave the town upside down.
As you say, just, when I, when I first saw this, I was like, oh, I don't really like that, because I really think we have such a need for that type of housing. But I would say that we have a need for all of this type of housing, and so fifty-five plus is probably the easiest to find other places in town to do, because it's not necessarily as impactful as, say, student housing, or, say, multifamily housing. You can do it in a couple of different places and maybe make up for that. Because I felt the same way. I'm like, oh, I really like that fifty-five plus. I think we really need it. I think if it's done well, it's a real benefit. But if you're going to cut something from this particular project and try to replicate it somewhere else in town, I think that's probably the easiest thing to do.
That makes sense. And then maybe you could talk to us a little bit, how do you, this hundred and sixty-nine unit type, how do you go about, do you picking, like, the three bedrooms, the two bedrooms, the stu, studios? Do you, is that, I know that's all to come, but-
Yeah. So it's, it's, it's early days, but we have gone through that, like, like we mentioned. We met with Aimco, the current, you know, the owner of the property extensively. We, we talked through all the different iterations. We talked about, you know, all the different configurations. We, we still need to make sure that it's financially feasible, but that we're trying to tick all the boxes and trying to make this fit, not just for us, but for the town. So we did talk about that, and we, we, we know that there's sensitivity about school-aged children, for example. So we wanted to make sure that we didn't, even though it would be financially better to increase the number of three-bedroom units, we didn't do that. We left the three-bedroom units where we had always been. You know, we've, we've increased the number, while we reduced significantly the total number of units, we increased the number of two-bedroom units that we had, for example, to help mitigate the, the financial impact of reducing the total units so much. But we still have fewer, you know, larger family-style units than exist there today. And that's why you see the school-aged children going down, even though we're increasing significantly the total number of units. So it's still early days, but we think, you know, we've, we've got a good unit mix that addresses a lot of the different things that we've been talking about.
Because I do think that there is a need for studios and one-bedrooms. Just because, you know, you hear time and time and again, the kids want to move out of their parents' house, and they got nowhere to go, you know? And you hear that a lot. And just to circle back to the pedestrian, I, I know it's a joint effort, and I think Merrimack really needs to be at the table, too. Like, I don't mean to be focused just on you guys. I think, you know, we're, we're, we're looking out for our residents, but Merrimack's going to look out for their students, too, and it's all going to be a combined effort.
We agree.
So, thank you.
Just a point of feedback for me. We, we've talked about the density and the reduction of density tonight. I think that's really just an artifact. I think when this comes to town meeting, I think the, the more overarching concern is just character of the community that you have to address. And I think this, this goes a little bit towards that. But when you're really addressing the, the people in town at that time, you got to be cognizant of that and address that issue. So to the extent you can address it now with us, that would be helpful. Continue to tell that story.
Yeah.
I think that's a really good point.
Understood.
I would, for me, I would phrase it as quality of life issues for the people of North Andover in that, in that whole section of- in that, in that whole section of town. It is a major connector for everybody. I mean, we don't have many, we're a rectangle, and we've got a few roads that are just going from top to bottom, and then after that, it disperses into the, into, you know, the, the smaller streets. So for me, and you said it well, and I'm glad you said it, it's, it's quality of life for the people in North Andover and their means and ability to get around and get to work. So that's, and I think you hear that over and over from everybody, but...
We agree.
Thank you.
It will be interesting to see how many people who live in North Andover end up being residents here. And we should have a pool on that. But I, I really appreciate the conversation tonight. You know, it really speaks to the power of collaboration, and I very much appreciate, you know, you folks from the planning board kind of coming in and helping us through this a little bit more, give us some edification. But I also think it speaks very clearly to the power and the importance of a process that we have in the town, that we have people and mechanisms to have the conversation, to negotiate, and to continue to focus on what's going to deliver best for us as a community. And you have a challenge, because you're creating a new neighborhood and a new value proposition, but at the same time, we're also saying, hey, but it's got to really blend in, and it can't stand out. And you know what? You've got to, that's the mission, but that's also the fabulous opportunity.
Yes.
So we very much appreciate it. We'll look for the next iteration.
Yes.
And with that, if there's nothing more to add, go to work. We'll look forward to it.
We thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
We gotta get going.
Thank you. We gotta start work right now.
Again, thank you. I know some of you are getting really sick of seeing us, but this is really maybe the end of the beginning.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of work to do, and thank you very much for your very thoughtful comments, and we will get to work.
Appreciate it. Good night.
Can we get a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting?
I'll make a motion to that effect. I'll second.
All right, motion made by Peter, second in pair. Peter.
Aye.
John.
Yes.
Aaron.
Aye.
Aye vote, yes. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Thank you, Eitan. Thank you, board.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely.
Let's do it again in three years.
Nice to see people with faces.
Yeah.
There you go.
Mr. Chair, I believe we have one resident who is here for a new business, Item D. Am I correct about that? Which is the, the proposer for the nonprofit? Would you mind taking him out of order?
No, absolutely not. Thank you for being patient. So we're just going to jump in our agenda to Item D, which is the request of the India Association of Greater Boston for a flag-raising event on August 13th, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. to commemorate India's 75th Independence Day for a flag and to remain raised till August 16, 2021. So please introduce yourself, sir, and tell us a little bit.
Thank you. So my name is Sushil Motwani. I've been a resident of this area for a long time. My wife, actually, is one of the business owners right across the street at Kumon of North Andover, right across the street. So, you know, we've very much associated with this area for a long time. We've been here for 20 years. I'm part of the executive committee of the India Association of Greater Boston, and, you know, we have been celebrating the Independence Day at many towns over the last many years. But over the last two years, especially with a lot of the diversity coming into play and with everything else that's been happening across the country, last year we had about 40, 45 towns that actually had the Indian flag hoisted during the Independence Day celebration that we have in India. The actual Independence Day is on 15th of August every single year. So we had the city of, the city of Boston and Lexington and Burlington and other towns last year who, you know, hoisted the flag. So, you know, one of our team members actually came and asked if North Andover would, you know, also be willing to, you know, hoist, you know, hoist the flag for us. We'll, we'll provide the flag, and we will also have it next to the American flag. We usually never have just the Indian flag, because most of us Indians who live here, you know, we eventually become U.S. citizens, but we have our allegiance to our own motherland. So we like to, you know, we usually sing the Indian national anthem as well as the American national anthem whenever we do the hoisting. So we'd love to have a North Andover approve, approve that for the duration that we have requested.
Right. Questions?
It's a lovely custom that you, that you both sing both national anthems. I think it's, it's, it's great.
We do it at every event. So every event that we have, whether it's our, you know, we call it our, you know, the, there's a Republic Day, which is in January, which is called, where the Constitution of India was formed. So we, this year it was all online, but we always sing both the national anthems. You know, we had, we try to always bring the, you know, the community from different countries together, but especially because we are all here as U.S. citizens, we respect this great land, too. So we, we always make sure we sing the American national anthem at the same time. Thank you.
We did it last year as well, didn't we do it?
No.
I remember a request.
We had a request, but I think that was something else.
I think we were late. By the time we submitted it, I think the town had, the meeting had already passed, and we couldn't, I was the one who was Dan Quentin in submitting the paperwork. So they had someone else do it this time. They said, you can go for the meeting, but let us do the work.
Delegation, delegation.
I think it's great.
I'll hear, if there are any other questions, I'll hear a motion.
I would move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Adjourned. Congratulations, we'll look for the flag.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it.
On August.
Yeah.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Mr. Chair, I don't want to play favorites, but perhaps we could also discuss the fire chief contract, since he has been sitting here, and I know we do have others, but he's new, so, if that would please the board.
No, that would be fine.
Okay. So we have a vote to sign the fire chief's contract. John and I actually went in my office, and we had an arm wrestle, and we have one small change from what we discussed entering our executive session. So I'm just going to run through the terms, if that pleases the board, and then I'll let you know about the small change. Okay. So the fire chief's contract with John Weir would be a three-year contract starting on July 1st. He would be a by-law employee governed by this contract and also the town's personnel policy, which is approved by the Board of Selectmen. He would be subject to an annual evaluation by the town manager. His first evaluation would actually occur at the six-month period. His compensation would be $140,000. He would receive 3% increase at the six-month period in annual COLA, and may receive merit increases at the town manager's discretion. His deferred compensation is $2,000. His uniform allowance is $1,100. In the budget, we will put $3,000 for him to attend conferences and have memberships, and he's allowed up to 10 days for that. Anything else requires additional approval. If he's injured on duty, we would cover him for 111-F. His termination clause, which allows for just cause termination, he would have a right to a hearing before the select board and be able to appeal that termination at the Superior Court or in district court. We would indemnify him as we indemnify all of our employees. We would give him professional liability insurance. We would allow personal use of the auto due to the nature of his work. He would have flexible hours of work due to the nature of the employment. He could have outside employment with permission from the town manager. There is resignation and termination language within the contract, and if, God forbid, he died during employment, we would pay his years any unpaid vacation as well as any pay due to him. The one change is that the contract would read as follows. After the initial year of this contract and on each succeeding year, the fire chief shall receive at least the same percentage salary base increase reflected in the agreement with local 2035 AFL-CIO. Okay?
Good.
We need a motion.
Please. I would move approval.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Other than we're all excited to make this official? All in favor? Aye. Congratulations. We've executed that contract, 5-0. We're good.
Such a proud moment for you and yourself. Congratulations. Oh, he'll be fine.
Keenan was for a staff meeting today, and he survived, so he's going to be great. And we're going to have him back at your next meeting for his appointment.
Great.
He's wearing it. Okay. Thank you.
You also?
All right, we can go back to the regular business.
So governmental reports, the downtown improvement master plan presentation. Hey, Jean.
Are you going to go through all 179? Because I need to fill your copy.
She's doing 10%. I told her we'd give her 10%.
All right. Hello, everyone. So I'm Jean Edwright, the planning director. I'm here with Dan Beckley, the staff planner, as well as John Boyjese, the town engineer, Andrew Shapiro, the director of community and economic development, as well as Randy Collins of the Beta Group, the consulting firm that we had hired to work with us on this plan. So as you're aware, the 2018 master plan included numerous recommendations and initiatives related to the, to improving the downtown experience. These strategies included enhancing visitation, investing in infrastructure, and streetscaping to enhance the downtown as a pedestrian-friendly economic hub, extend high-visibility crosswalks and additional, at two additional intersections, evaluate the possibility of changing on-street parking to increase sidewalk widths, landscape buffers, or on-street bike facilities. It included looking for opportunities to construct curb bumpouts, continuing the plan to implement underground utilities, evaluating zoning, and hiring a consultant to evaluate and recommend improvements. In late 2019, we did just that. We hired Beta Group to consult with us and prepare a downtown improvement master plan. The purpose of the plan was to address the strategies of the downtown master plan and to bring a renewed focus to the civic and commercial center of the town. This was a very public process. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, it took much longer than we expected. However, we did conduct three public meetings, the first of which was held at the North Andover High School, and the next two were conducted virtually. In addition to the meetings listed here, we also, oh, you should be displaying that, sorry.
We shut that TV off, and I thought that's where they were watching.
So you're casting to the screen, sorry.
Okay.
So we did conduct three, the high school as well as two virtual meetings. In addition to these two meetings, we conducted a meeting specifically for the downtown property owners and business owners. Dan is going to provide a summary of that meeting later on tonight. So the first step in preparing the downtown improvement master plan was to understand the existing conditions and identifying the limits of the project area. The area included the core downtown commercial area, the historic mill area, and the connections between them. The existing conditions studied all of these elements shown in the box here. Studying these conditions in the downtown area helped build an understanding of the needs in the area and was useful in facilitating the communication and discussion with the public. Dick, this is where you can look at your 110-page slide deck. The appendix includes all the details specific to these existing conditions, as well as much more detail of the report itself. We did our best to summarize this in essence of time, of course, but really provide a high-level overview. So public meeting, number one, approximately 50 people attended. You can see common, go next slide. So there were common likes. People liked this, these, in essence of the 50 people, these were really common themes. So the civic uses, especially town halls, people really loved the renovation of town hall and keeping it on Main Street, the senior center, the post office, unique variety of businesses, the farmer's market, and the sense of community. The ones that visit here, they really like the sense of community down here. I would say they characterized it really as errand-based, but errands they like to do, and they like to be in the downtown area. Unfortunately, the dislikes were the lack of walkability. I mean, I think everybody's experienced the sidewalk network here, it needs some improving. Lack of night activity and destinations, traffic congestion that was really related with the Sutton Street intersection, the train going through, and that can really, it backs up to Heavenly Donuts now on occasion, so. And the lack of parking. We're going to see that the lack of parking is really more a perception than a reality. There are certainly peaks at different areas on Main Street, especially the post office, Duncan, and Heavenly during certain times of day, but the, the reality is, if you're willing to walk a few more feet, then there's usually parking available.
You can count it towards your steps.
Yes, you should count steps, yes. So possible changes that people suggested at this first meeting was more lighting, variety of uses and mixed use, wayfinding and branding, add more public spaces, and improve connectivity. We asked, what downtowns do you like? What would you like us to be more like? And historically, we've always heard Andover. I think most people have heard that, but we heard these others as well, Portsmouth, Newburyport, North Conway, Bath, Wakefield. As you can see in the images, I mean, they're traditional New England historic-type downtowns. But I thought it was interesting. It was, you know, a lot more were thrown out than we historically have heard. So public meetings two and three, these meetings were virtual and included review of alternative conceptual designs that came out of this first meeting. The attendees were polled on their preferences. Meeting two was attended by 48 people and meeting three by 20 people. The most significant alternative concepts centered around angled parking versus parallel parking, brick versus brick-banded sidewalks, and keeping or burying the underground utilities. Again, we'll come back to that in a bit. These discussions informed final concept plans that included parallel parking, so the preference was to remain parallel on both sides of the street, brick-banded sidewalks, and alternatives showing the downtown with and without utilities. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dan, and he'll explain some of the more targeted recommendations that were made.
Thank you. So based on these public meetings and the evaluation of existing conditions, as Jean had mentioned, there was consideration of different design alternatives, some of the main ones being brick versus brick-branding sidewalk, angled versus parallel parking, and that led us to final designs of streetscape improvements, which really focused on the walkability and activity and sense of place that people expressed that they liked and would want to see more of. So in keeping up with that, more crossings in downtown to help, you know, their, allow, facilitate mid-block crossings as well as to reduce speeding in downtown, and to accommodate this as well as parking, bumping out at crosswalks so that pedestrians are visible to oncoming traffic, as well as setting the cars back from the road, is one of the main things that is done, both with parking and crosswalks in the downtown. Along with that, the driving lanes, which ranged from 16 to, I believe, 20 feet, were narrowed to around 13 feet in many places, which allows for much more room for sidewalks and amenities and accommodations on the sidewalks. One of the major improvements being recommended is at Waverly Street and Main Street. You can see that the crosswalk has been pushed towards the end of the street so that pedestrians are more visible, do both vehicles on Main Street and on Waverly. The bump out at the corner on the left-hand side has been shifted to, again, accommodate crossing by narrowing the crossing length. And just generally, accommodations have been made so that pedestrians are better able to navigate the downtown and cross more conveniently between places without having to run out into the street. This has resulted in, as I mentioned, as Jean mentioned, shifts in parking. So I believe we lose a couple spaces across the whole redesign. Some have just been moved, mainly, the ones that we mainly lost were across the street from Town Hall. The ones on Water Street are shifted to the non-residential side, but largely, parking has remained the same while pedestrian improvements have been made throughout. Amenities were a large part of this to help sort of create a sense of place and bring that activity that people said they liked to see and would like to see more of. So streetlights was a big part of this. Many people said there is nothing, not nothing, but there is a lack of activity downtown at night. And so adding lights to the street and, in addition, beautifying it with decorative streetlights was one of the main suggestions. I should point out that all of these say "up to," which means this is sort of a capacity recommendation, so depending on where we see fit, there may be less decorative streetlights, less public benches, less bike racks, less trashcans. Street trees run the whole length of the study area from Main Street up to the mills, and there are not specific places recommended for most public benches or bike racks or trashcans, but again, those are things that we can decide through engineering, design processes, and further public input. There is a parklet across the street from Town Hall, which is shown in the bottom right-hand corner. It's both a bump out that allows for more crossing and is additional green space and public benches. And connectivity and signage, again, facilitated And connectivity and signage, again, facilitating walkability. We also heard that there's a lack of connection between the mills and the core of downtown. And so, both improving sidewalks, widening them, and creating sort of open public spaces through trails and a boardwalk over Osgood Pond were recommended. Yeah, and I believe a grant is being applied for, for the engineering design for the boardwalk over Osgood Pond. There's thoughts about a sort of rail trail along a former railroad easement using the, maybe not using, but where there's the remnants of the bridge over Sutton Pond. And branding and wayfinding were also a really big part of this. So, wayfinding wouldn't just go downtown, but in key areas around town to direct people to the downtown area and give them a better sense of direction, a sense of where they are, and also better directing people to larger public parking areas like behind Town Hall, which are often overlooked. And zoning was something that was considered. While there are not as explicit recommendations for zoning, it was noted that there is inconsistent zoning around downtown, and this creates sort of a lack of cohesion in character. And so, the master plan recommended a base zoning district. This is something that Andrew has applied for a grant for, not the zoning district, but an audit of zoning and looking at recommendations on how to improve and achieve that. And that kind of brings us to looking forward. So this is not, you know, complete. There's still other planning, other studies to do to help us get to implementation here. This will take a while. And in considering that and the other things we need to coordinate in this process, we heard a lot about undergrounding utilities, and that's really something that requires a lot of coordination and discussion, and so we felt we needed to solicit further input from the business community who have been impacted by Columbia Gas explosions and COVID. And so, we had a fourth meeting with just downtown property owners and business owners to sort of gauge how they felt about undergrounding utilities, because they are the ones who would be most impacted by this. So, in addition to, we had sent letters during the normal public process to all downtown business owners. Jean canvassed all downtown businesses for this business-specific meeting, and we sent letters to every property owner of, I think, multi, maybe just every property owner in the downtown area, or was it every property owner?
Just a question, how many folks is that?
There's a little over 100 businesses and a similar amount of property owners. I think it might have been, property owners might have been closer to 200.
So we hand-delivered the flyers to everybody all the way down to Water Street?
Yep.
And to Sutton Street, including Sutton Street?
That's a lot.
And we asked them to share that with their landlord, if they had a landlord, but we also direct mailed the property owner themselves to invite them. And as always, I mean, we did get participation. It wasn't the maximum we had hoped for, but we got good feedback, inconsistent feedback, and so at the end we'll share that.
Yeah, so we got, there were 16 people who came to the meeting. These are not mutually exclusive. 80% were business owners, 20% were property owners, 20% were residents. Well, a majority had owned businesses for five years or less in the downtown. 40% owned them for six years or longer. And we wanted to get, you know, their general sense before really going into what all of this means, how this process works. And so, just some basic questions, asking, do overhead utilities detract from the aesthetic appearance of downtown? Large majority said yes. Do you believe undergrounding would have a positive impact on downtown? Majority said yes. And so, really looking at it in this simple yes/no, do you want these or not? Most people were interested in undergrounding them, but it is a much more complicated process, as John and Andrew will explain.
Wrong way. Good evening, John Boyjese, town engineer. So, as Dan and Jean had indicated, so the undergrounding for the downtown areas, you may or may not be aware, around 2001, town meeting voted to allow utility surcharge, to allow all North Andover utility customers to be surcharged for the moving of the overhead wires and utility and removal of the utility poles. The project was specific to two areas in town, which was the Common Old Center and the downtown Main Street area. The first phase of the project, which was in the old center, was completed approximately 16 years ago. Recognizing that the undergrounding of the utilities in the downtown area was a goal within the master plan, it made sense that this work be considered along with the downtown streetscape improvement plan. The limits of the downtown undergrounding will extend on Main Street from Sutton Street to Merrimack Street and along Water Street from Main Street to Merrimack Street, and then also extend a little bit along Waverly Road First and Second Streets. As you can see here from these photos, you know, these are some examples of the typical construction from an undergrounding utility project that was performed in Weston, Mass. This, this photo on the upper left is an example of a typical duct bank trench that shows all the conduits involved, including the conduits that need to go to the sides of the roads to provide the services for each of the homes, residents, commercial properties, and also the additional conduits for the other non-electric utilities, such as Verizon and Comcast. So, the trenches typically do go in different directions depending on the utility, so it's not just one single trench nice and straight. And of course, you have to navigate around the other existing utilities that are underground, such as the water sewer and drainage. In addition to these trenches, what can be expected is, of course, the wonderful steel plates that everyone knows when you dig a trench, you know, these steel plates would be seen throughout the entire length until such time that they can adequately backfill the trench and bring it up to the surface so that it's safe. One thing to note, the electric company in these type of situations requires that this duct bank be backfilled with concrete. So it's not just you put the conduit in and you can put the soil back. Because it's, it's high power, it has to have a concrete encasement. So that takes longer, which means the trench is open longer, which means steel plates are in the road longer than you would expect. The, the photo on the-
John, how long would you say it would take to underground the utilities on Main Street?
So, I actually have a timeline coming up. That's a great question.
Let's get to it.
So, so the photo on the upper right is another example. So along the entire length, in addition to the duct bank and the conduits, you also need to have access for future maintenance and access to actually pull the wires through these ducts. So, these manhole structures are actually quite larger than a typical manhole structure we would have, because so much has to happen inside them. Because of this, it also requires larger excavations. So again, not just a trench with the conduits, all these manholes, you have a much larger excavation that's required for the installation. And the photos on the bottom here are just depicting from the Weston project. Again, situations where the trenches can extensively, you know, significantly extend in the width of the trench, especially if anything's encountered, like an existing utility, and now you gotta go around it, so now we need to dig further out, making it a much larger excavation. As soon as this comes back. Page.
I know, it's acting up behind you.
I know.
We can still see it.
You guys can see it, right? Okay, that's the important thing. So, here are some of the renderings that were prepared by the towns consultant, as, as requested from the residents. This shows renderings with the proposed downtown streetscape improvements, one with the utilities and one without the utilities, meaning the overhead wires and the telephone poles. The photos on the top are the ones that do include the telephone poles and the electrical wires. As you can see, the rendering on the bottom, same renderings, but with those removed. Timeline. So, here is the proposed timeline for the streetscape improvement project only, which includes a survey, the design, the engineering, the bidding, the construction, and the final paving. As you can see, it's estimated, the timeline for just the streetscape improvements is estimated at about 5.6 years with a total cost of approximately 17.4 million. Now, that cost was developed as a budgetary cost by our consultant, I should say. It does include, and Andrew can talk a little more to this, the inflation. We accounted for inflation depending on the years and whatnot, so, but it was for a budgetary estimate prepared by the consultant. So, combining both the downtown streetscape improvement project along with the underground utility project, we're now looking at a 10-year timeframe for both projects, which is a significant timeline for the project and potentially a significant impact to the local downtown businesses. As you can see, so on the upper is, is the same slide you saw before, which the streetscape improvement, 5.6 years, 17.4 million, lowers now with the undergrounding utilities, which is estimated at an additional, well, take eight years, total project for both, if we have done kind of at the same time, would be 10-year total. The undergrounding project, it is an additional $2 to $3 million. And again, this is an estimate I received from the utility company, pre-COVID estimate, so COVID, we are seeing increasing costs substantially, you know, on materials and whatnot, so this, this potentially has the ability to increase. And, and that cost is really associated with the upfront costs necessary due to Verizon. So, one of the issues with the surcharges is Verizon is only allowed to surcharge landlines. A lot of people don't have landlines anymore, so for them to accrue sufficient funding to allow the project to move forward would take substantial amount of time. So, this would be the amount the town would have to front, enable to, enable the project to move forward. And I believe a similar situation happened with the old center project, but in that case, the town was able to find the funding to kind of move that project forward, and then essentially, I believe Verizon paid back the town for the, the money that was upfront for the project.
So how much of this time is actual disruption to the downtown area? I know a lot of it is planning and-
Yep. So, yeah, the, the first two years, I would say two to, to three years is all upfront. No, no disruption, engineering, you know. One of the things for the undergrounding is we have to acquire easements for all the transformer pads. They estimated there's about 70 pads or easements that would be required. So they estimated about a year for, with help from the town to acquire those and then go out to bid. So, actual construction, you know, which again, is going to be phased over the, you know, different areas, you're looking at probably between both projects, I would say four to five years of construction going on, whether it's undergrounding, digging the trenches, you know, manholes, or the streetscapes, which is, you know, installing lighting, installing curbing, doing brickwork, side work, work, obviously ending with the restoration and paving of the roadway itself. And then, the, the last part is, is more the, the undergrounding. You do have the service cutovers, which the town's responsible, so we would have to hire an electrician to cut all the new services over for all the residence and commercial buildings down there. Not so much an impact, more than you see utility trucks, you know, along the roadway. But, yeah, I, for construction, it's, it's like five years you'd be looking at, some kind of construction going on downtown.
Yeah, I think from the business owners that I've spoken to, that's their biggest concern, right? Is that-
Exactly. Yeah, that was one of the main reasons, you know, with the streetscape improvement, that we wanted to make sure we reached out to them and tried to present this to them and so everyone understands, along with the photos and the timeline, what to expect. You know, we didn't want anyone to, to think, one, construction season and everything's done, so.
I mean, not to be negative, but every business in the old center got knocked out when they did that work, you know?
Yes, I, I know that. Yep, that was definitely one of my concerns also. Yep, they, they suffered quite a bit. Oh, you're up next. Okay. Let me see, I think, yeah. So that was it. Yep, so now Andrew's actually going to discuss the results from our polling after we presented essentially these slides to the downtown businesses.
Thanks, John.
Absolutely.
Great, and I'll take this, I'll take this home. Andrew Shapiro, Director of Community and Economic Development for the record. And so, you guys heard earlier from Dan about the meeting we had with the downtown business owners. You heard some pretty positive feedback on the, the idea, conceptually speaking, of burying overhead utility wires, because in concept, it seems like a great idea. You heard that 20 years or so, businesses and property owners attended, 83% said that they, that the wires detract from the appearance of downtown, 71% said that removing the wires would have a 70, would have a positive impact. And then here you see sort of the, after we presented the information that John just went through with us all, the, the questions we posed from there on out, how do you feel about the proposal to underground utilities? Well, we didn't really get anybody saying that, that would be a very positive thing to do. Most people were said somewhat positive, and then a mix between neutral, somewhat negative, very negative. Should the town pursue undergrounding in addition to streetscape improvements? And most said no, with the rest 29% saying yes, and 14% being of no opinion. And then finally, do you believe the benefits of undergrounding outweigh the potential impacts? The vast majority said, not the vast majority, but a solid majority, 57% said no, 29% said yes, 14% no opinion. So that's just a, a little bit of a flavor for what businesses in the downtown feel as, after having seen some of the more detailed information on undergroundings. And so just to kind of bring it home, I don't think we have to go through this in too much detail here. This is just a kind of a juxtaposition of the cost and benefits of undergrounding utilities. Obviously, you're improving aesthetics when you bury utility lines. It can improve safety, both for pedestrians on sidewalks, but also during weather events. And then, you know, you might increase some private property values by some small degree. But the costs, obviously, are the high cost of installation. It creates challenges to access of the utilities themselves. It can cause a traffic and parking disruption, especially during construction, obviously, and then the disruption to businesses that we've all discussed. Here's a little bit more of a detailed breakout of the construction cost estimates, and just to be clear, this is just for the streetscape improvements, aspects of the project, not the undergrounding of the utilities. And this was put together by our consultant, Beta Group. Randy Collins is here with us this evening. He can definitely answer any questions in more detail, if you have any. But obviously, they represent an investment in the downtown as contemplated in the master plan. We would obviously need to seek further funding in order to fund the actual capital improvements, and I can go into a little more detail on, on how I've already started to approach that issue. And as I said before, it does not include the cost of undergrounding. And then would obviously, we would need to sort of get some level of a consensus between the select board and others, maybe, town officials, on, on whether or not we were going to proceed with undergrounding of utilities, if it's still something the town, in fact, does want to see for the downtown, or if it's, you know, going to be costly and invasive enough just to do the streetscape improvements alone, or if it makes sense to integrate the, the, the undergrounding as a part of the project as well. So what's the next step? So, obviously, we need to, like I said before, seek a determination for a path forward on the overhead utilities. We have to seek funding to do the projects. And so just a little more detail on that, the Commonwealth has a, a program called One Stop for Growth, and really what it is, is just now a combination of a series of grants that are not unfamiliar to many communities around Massachusetts to seek funding for a variety of projects. One of the bigger projects, or one of the- or one of the bigger programs is called Mass Works. We've obviously been successful in the past in getting Mass Works funding, most recently for the sewer line extension along Route 125. We've also had Mass Works funding for sidewalk improvements along Route 125. So we did just apply for the latest round through the One Stop for Growth program, which also includes a basket of other grants, including a housing choice capital grant or action grant. And we're eligible for that because we are a housing choice community, as well as something called the Mass Downtown Initiative. And there's just a variety of other programs. And now the state looks at it holistically and says, if we want to fund these projects, we can choose from a basket of different grants, apply different levels of funding from each grant source if they want to, if you're eligible for that. And so what I applied, or what we applied for is to fund the design and engineering of the conceptual plans for the downtown streetscape improvements. So we applied for about $1.9 million, which represents about a 10% of the total construction cost that's currently contemplated for the project. So it's a sizable amount of money, as you can see, just to even engineer the project. And then an additional $75,000 to do the, I think Dan mentioned before, we want to take a holistic look at zoning for the downtown, establish a uniform downtown zoning district as called for in the master plan. And so that $75,000 would be to hire our consultant to undertake that process for us. And it would obviously be done in concert with community input. And just to be clear, the engineering and design piece would also be done with community input as well, because as you're designing something, you obviously have 25% design, 50% design. And each step of the way, we would have opportunities to bring the plans forward to the public to make sure that they were comfortable with how the project was being designed. And as I said before, I just wanted to thank Randy Collins for coming this evening. He's with Beta Group, who led this process, which I thought was a very inclusive one, even though we did it in the middle of a pandemic. And I also want to thank both Gene and Dan for really shepherding this project through as well. They've been incredible partners throughout the whole, the whole process, as well as a close-knit group of core stakeholders that we had, which include the representatives of the North Andover Merchants Association, the owners of the First and Main property, the owner of Heavenly Donuts. And I'm probably missing people, but a couple other close people, as well as the broader public, who provided a lot of good input for us throughout the process. So that's it.
I mean, I love, I love the idea of undergrounding all utilities. I think it's something that is long, long overdue for Main Street to really clean it up. I'm just real concerned about the duration of time and the amount of impact on businesses down there. I'd love to see some kind of a mitigation plan that shows how we would, you know, do this either in phases or somehow to make sure that we're, you know, taking into consideration those businesses and we're not, you know, adversely impacting them. And I think your, you know, your surveys show they're, they're most likely colored by the fact that we just came out of COVID. And before that, we had Columbia gas issue. So those businesses were all highly impacted during those times, too. And now, now we're saying, okay, for the next whatever number of years, we're going to be tearing up Main Street and undergrounding the utilities. The end of it is going to be beautiful, like the Old Center. It came out really great. But I think it's living through the project is what is the concern of the businesses. And we need to make sure, you know, if we, as we move forward, that we can definitely give them the assurances that they need, that they're not going to be knocked out of business while this is taking place. So we need to make sure that parking is available, you know, customers and clients can get to the businesses without having to, you know, be too, you know, put out to get there, and that they have access, that the businesses are easily accessible. Just, you know, and many other things, I'm sure. But that's my thoughts.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add that we did ask National Grid what we do have available, because obviously that's important. So since we, the inception of this process, we've billed $10.4 million. We've spent of that, 7.9 on the old common area. So now we have $2.5 million left to invest in future projects. Obviously, we still have a ways to go to be able to afford to do the full undergrounding project.
I kept excited when the first time I was talking about something million. I'm like, oh!
We did too. We had to clarify the email that they sent us, but it was sad news instead of good news. So...
I'm incredibly impressed with this plan. I've watched it sort of evolve over the last few months. And I just want to thank you all for, you know, making sure you're talking to all stakeholders. I know many people have put a ton of time and effort into it. I share the same concerns about undergrounding. I mean, I really, as someone who went through the Columbia gas explosions, we've all been impacted by COVID, I go, is it really worth the impact on these businesses? So I don't know if there's a way. You've done the work, and I get it, but is there another way to go back to them and say, now we're really thinking about whether we want to do this? Please answer before we, you know, continue.
Some utilities are put behind the buildings. I mean, even in our neighborhood, we have neighbors who, the poles are in their backyards. Just a thought.
I, and I can't, I would, I would defer to either Randy as an engineer or...
I want the smartest one.
John. Yeah, definitely not me on this issue, so, on putting utilities behind. I don't know if you have...
You must be familiar with what we're talking about near the library.
Yeah, yeah. So one of the things, obviously, this is, it stems from National Grid. Obviously, they're the main, the main driver for the project. So it would be a situation where their engineering group would have to look at it. There'd have to be sufficient room, sufficient easements in that case. The easements, I think, would concern them if we tried to put that back there, because those, those are there, you know, one, if we move the poles, keep the poles, or if we even tried to underground. I think it was mentioned when we had the meeting, they kind of preferred not. They wanted to keep it in the right of way. That makes it easier for them long-term for maintenance, because then they're, they're not dealing with potential residents. They're dealing with, with us, you know, the town, you know? And we essentially give them the right, obviously, in the right of way to maintain their, their infrastructure. So...
I'm sure it would be complex. Either way, there's pros and cons.
Absolutely. Yep, yep, there definitely is.
Think about the fact that we just approved all those little cell phone towers. What would happen if we got rid of the telephone poles? Will we finally end up with some cell service?
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I just want to thank you guys for all the work. I mean, that's what we hear time and time again, is what can we do downtown? How can we bring more businesses? How can we make it more walkable, more pretty, right? It's been like this since I can remember. So I think that it really is something that the residents want. And that's certainly a piece of the, you know, finding out if that's worth it, the underground utilities. And it would be phased, and we would do it over time, for sure. But the end result of all of this, I think, is going to be so impactful for the residents and the businesses. So...
No, it would be interesting to look at all the things that you discussed first, the prettying up of everything, and see if that's enough of a distraction that it won't seem as important. It would be, and that's kind of the low-hanging fruit, I would imagine, as well. The benches, the flowers, you know, flowers coming off some of the, even the telephone poles in some communities. I don't know if they would allow, that that would, again, just pretty it up. It's more at eye level, probably, too, that we wouldn't be so enamored of putting the underground utility. Just, it's just a thought, but it might be the first way to go, to say, are we happy with this? Is this good enough for now?
Thing is, to take advantage of the benches and streetlights and things, the widening of the sidewalk allows for that to happen.
They want you to talk.
Can't hear you.
Sorry about that.
So some of that streetscape infrastructure involves widening the sidewalks.
Yeah.
To allow for the benches and to allow for those streetlights and trees. And so in order to have those put in place, widening the sidewalk means if we're going underground utilities, we should be doing that at the same time.
Oh, I, yeah.
Yeah. So you saw in front of Town Hall, I mean, there's a tremendous bunch of bump out of the sidewalk. It narrows the crosswalk.
Yep.
It makes it safer. It narrows the roadways down to 11 feet each way, much narrower than it is today. So there's traffic calming, there's safety improvements, and there's a pocket park. So First and Main, it's actually some of their land, and they've said they'd be more than willing to add green space there, do landscaping, put benches there. And so they all kind of dovetail into each other.
And we do have money for trees coming. And it really was for mainly for downtown, because that's where the trees are dying. There's plenty of trees out country. Yep. I know. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Well, Gene, I love the idea of the bridge.
Me too.
And I think that's, that's part of the thinking here. And, you know, I know it's all getting late, but I do think that's the opportunity, going through the process the way we did for the master plan and for this, is that you knew things sort of dawn and come together. And reality is, if you flip around and look at the flip side of Main Street here, it's a pretty cool area. It's wonderful. It's natural. Most people have no idea it's there.
And I think you were at the first public hearing, and that we broke out into different breakout groups. It was like four groups that broke out and talked about the likes and dislikes. And it was like, why can't we open up the water? Like, that water is an amenity. And like, it was consistent. Different groups came back with the same feedback. And so I think that speaks to it. And just that connectivity, back and forth. I think David Steinberg's here, so obviously, we'd need him to partner with us. It provides a connection from Main Street to the Mills to Hills, to the high school, to Wire Hill. It's just all part of the picture.
Yeah, it all ties in together. And the last thing I would add is, you know, it's a long way out, but how technology moves, and, you know, we don't know what the technological developments could be over the next three to five, 10 years. You know, we're thinking, this is the way utilities have to go. And so I would, in a great way, challenge you, Andrew, find that next revolutionary way that somebody else is doing it somewhere else in this country, around the world. There's somebody looking at, how can we do this more efficiently? There's got to be another, a better process than this that somebody's working on somewhere. So I'm sort of hopeful for that, to your point, you know, is, you know, 10 years just seems like way too long. There's got to be another way. So thank you for this, really, very much. Great work, gang. I wish we could vote on something to make it happen, you know? It's like, okay. Yeah, yeah. That's right. That's right. Okay. Let's see, what do we have? Next, we have a request from the North Andover Merchers Association to use the town common and to close Mass Ave from Academy Road to the lights on Osgood Street for the Fall Festival on September 18th, 2021, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Do we have anybody here to speak to that?
That's me.
Okay, that's what I thought. Over to you, Janice.
Yes, I mean, there is, you know, we're super excited to be able to offer this again. And we have a whole team of people on the board who are looking forward to planning and maybe doing some new and different things. So we'd really love to bring back the Fall Festival.
Awesome. Awesome.
Not really requesting anything different than any other year.
In the former chair of the Merchers Association, I enthusiastically move approval.
Excellent.
I will second that as one of the original founding members within the following days.
All good. Well, all we can do is then just support it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So here we're off and going. Next, we have a request from the Exchange Club to change the date for their ceremony at the town common from June 13th, 2021, to June 12th, 2021, at 10:00 a.m., and for permission to use the stage on June 12th, 2021.
Enthusiastically move approval. It is so stunning to drive by there. It takes your breath away. It's a great, it's a great event and a great fundraiser for a very terrific group of people. That's been, Exchange Club's been around a long time. So I would, again, move approval.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, 5-0. Next, vote to accept the right of way from RCG North Andover Mills LLC for High Street. And we've got a copy of the Declaration of Right of Way. Hello, Mr. Steinberg, if you would like to speak to this?
David Steinberg, RCG LLC. We are trying to get going on the East Mill Flats project at the East Mill. And this is just one of those sort of routine steps. The road exists. And this is really for the benefit of the town to make sure that you guys have the rights to access that road and maintain it.
Remember, this is, we've been doing a lot of these lately. It's been part of the planning board decisions. It does not require us to do anything, but if we wanted to, we'd be able to. So it is a very important step that the planning board has taken.
Great. Thank you. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Good night.
Okay. Request of Sue Park to use Osgood Street and Court Street for the roadways on August 15th, 2021, starting at 8:00 a.m. And I know Sue's attending, fortunately, to a recovery. But Janice, you've got some little familiarity with this, too?
A little. I just, I suggested to Sue that since she knew she wasn't going to be able to be here, that she write us a little note about what she's looking for. So essentially, she is a fitness instructor who has run several other 5Ks in the area. She, you know, is great about including everybody in the community and finding great sponsors, which helps our businesses, bringing people together. So she is looking to host a race on August 15th, which is a Sunday, expecting about 200 runners. She's expecting everybody off the roads by 10:30, and will follow all COVID guidelines. There's a map showing, I forget where are they going? They're going, basically, starting at Stevens Estate and going up Osgood, onto Academy, onto Court, back onto Osgood, and back into the estate. So...
And this was the race that was all set to go last year.
Yes.
She put everything together and then got COVID KO'd on this. So...
Yep. So, I mean, I would move that we approve.
Great. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0. We look forward to it, Sue. Okay, request of Elizabeth Walther Grant of the Merrimack Valley Black and Brown Voices to use the town common for a vendor event on July 25th, 2021, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Is Elizabeth calling in to us?
She was planning on being here, but she sent an email that she got stuck at work.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to what kinds of things that they have. It just would be kind of fun.
I think it's basically a vendor fair.
Just a vendor, but is there a theme to it or anything like that?
Yeah. I believe they've had several of these events in Andover, and I...
And also Stevens School.
Last year or so, now they're looking to use the common. Yes. So they're expecting 400 people. It is all local-owned businesses. And additionally, it's been approved by all the departments.
Sounds like fun. I'll move aboard.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good to have, it's nice to see events coming together now.
Sure.
And hopefully the sun shines.
Mr. Chair, we're going to ask not to move forward tonight with the execution of the purchase and sale agreement with Minko for the acquisition of One and Three, Sari Drive. Unfortunately, we still have some work that we need to complete on this. And we will be asking you for an executive session before your next meeting.
Okay. Understand, understand. It's just been a process. And then the last thing in our new business is vote to end the state of emergency.
Move approval.
Right? Good.
I think we sort of proved it earlier and I...
We all made it through?
Who's my second on this?
I'll second.
There we go. Everybody, all seconds this way. All in favor? Aye, all right. Declared, it's ended. So with that, I'll hear a motion to move into licensing.
I will move that we open a meeting at the North Andover Licensing Commission.
I'll second that.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
To you, Rosemary.
We are now in licensing, and we can tell things are opening up, because the first time on the agenda is a request from Deborah Ingles for butlers and bars for five one-day liquor licenses at Smolak Farm in the large event tent, and a waiver of the police detail for the following events. Would you like me to read the following events, or just say included in the... So I would... included in the? So I would, any questions, any comments?
Move approval. And this is for June 19th, June 26th, July 4th, July 17th, and August 15th. And these are all hours of, well, actually, let's go through, let's go through them specifically, right? So June 19th, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., all alcohol. June 26th, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., all alcohol. July 4th, 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., all alcohol. July 17th, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., all alcohol. And from August 15th, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., wine and malt.
And Mr. Chair, I just, I just want to add that in the, and I apologize, Madam, I interrupted you. I just didn't want to miss this. The police department actually is recommending a detail for the nighttime weddings, and I just want to make sure that we don't miss that.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, the proponent is asking for a waiver. The police are recommending a detail for nighttime weddings.
Do you want to add that to your?
Four out of the five.
Oh, no, I was just saying, that was going to be my question, is the police detail important?
Yeah, so friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, that that's included for the, for that.
We are not waiving the detail.
Okay, that's perfectly said. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Just, just to be noted, the person who submitted this was here this evening, but had a conflict. She came and we told her it would be just fine. Sent her a law. Yeah. Yeah, she was here and she said, do I, we told her she could, she could come. Yeah. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a request of Kate Bibbo for, of Stevens Coolidge House and Gardens for eight one-day wine, malt, and liquor license and a waiver of the police details for the following events. Seminar picnic concerts on July 9th, 16th, 23rd, 30th, August 6th, August 20th, and 27th, 2021, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And community picnics on June 27th, 2021, July 18th, 2021, August 29th, 2021, from 10:00 to 6:00 p.m. And thirdly, the Third Annual Oktoberfest on September 25th, 2021, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And I believe we have, would you like to speak to this and?
Hi, yes, that's me submitting the request.
Okay, do you have anything you'd like to address, or does the board have any questions for her?
So the concerts here, they're not like full band concerts. And they're also, they've been repositioned to the, to the far side of the event, of the.
Yes, so in agreements with the last year's entertainment license conversation, the stage location and direction will be facing the way we all agreed upon. And then, I'm sure you didn't have time to read it, but just submitted a letter beforehand just addressing.
I was going to read it.
Oh, great, okay.
Nice letter, thank you.
Okay.
If you'd like to read it, that's fine.
No, no, that's okay. I just wanted to mention, at least tonight, the, the sound study that we'll be conducting is in the works, so we can address just noise concerns as well for the summer.
And we do actually have, I confirmed this morning, the health department will also be doing sound analysis. We were able to borrow a machine from the department of Public Health, so they'll be out with a decibel reader for the Father's Day program. Yes.
Oh, great. Should I arrange that with Stephen or?
Look about and just do an inspection. So they'll be out before that doing levels, regular levels, and then they'll be out again doing the levels at night.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I, I was having, maybe it's just 9:20, I was having counting issues. So I was counting them and saying it doesn't add up right.
I actually think maybe one was, it's the concerts are every Friday evening, 5:00 to 8:00. And I feel like there was a August skipped between 6:00 and 20:00. I feel like there should be like a 13 or something in there.
August 29th, well, that was for picnic.
I count 11, Muddy. And so.
I tried to submit them all at once, just so if there are any questions. But then, actually, Elizabeth from Merrimack Valley Black and Brown Voices reached out if we could do an event together. So I will be back.
Okay.
Okay, so to them.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. So I think the motion should be for 11 one-day licenses, not eight. And I apologize that we didn't catch that sooner. Apparently, I can still count after 8 o'clock at night. So if we could reflect 11, that would be good. And I would recommend that we did just hold Smolak Farms to require a police detail for the nighttime events. And we may want to consider doing that for the 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. ones as well here if we're doing it for Smolak.
I'm interested. Is there a time after which public comment cannot be submitted to what, like?
Um, that is up to the chair.
Okay.
So, did we receive some?
Did somebody send in a public comment?
Hold on, let me look. Okay, so it looks like we received two or one?
I see one.
Okay.
But I just don't know the protocol.
Yeah, so tip, Madam Chair, would you like me to see if there's any public comment?
Yes. If the, if the board agrees, it's fine to have you read it for us if you wouldn't mind.
All right, so it looks like we have received two. The first one is from Kelly Cormier. It says, Dear Time Manager Rodriguez and Select Board Members, first, I apologize for the late public comment for tonight's meeting 6-8. Please know that all the same concerns still exist about the trustees' business in the R3 zone. I have had no communication from any employee of the trustees since the 5:10 select board meeting. None of the issues have been addressed as far as I have been informed. I respectfully request that you deny the license until the issues have been resolved with the budding residents. Father's Day is coming. Please allow my family to celebrate without having paid event customers staring in at us or their loud music as we celebrate our celebration and family time. And then, there must be one more. Sorry, one came in on the form, so just give me one second to pull the form up. And thank you, Janice, because I had not looked since the beginning. Okay, so this one's from Mary Kilpatrick on Andover Street. I oppose the granting of liquor license to the trustees and support the comments submitted by my neighbor Kelly Cormier. Granting the licenses would essentially mean the trustees are having an event with live music and alcohol nearly every weekend this summer in a residential neighborhood. I also have not heard from the trustees since the last board meeting. And those are the two only public comments that I see. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Would you like to speak to that? Were some of these addressed in the letter? I'm trying to take a quick look to see. Was some of it addressed in the letter, I think?
Not for these particular people.
Not for these particular people, but.
But some of them.
But working, yes, with some of the neighbors. And you were speaking about the, you were speaking about the acoustics and noise control. But that, that consultant, a study date of July 9th comes after Father's Day.
Yes, unfortunately, I couldn't secure a Father's Day weekend from the consultant.
Yeah.
That's, that is our plan, is to have our first inspection on the Father's Day weekend to the event. Yes.
So they would do the testing then, or just they would monitor it and then have to say you need to turn it down? Is that what we're saying?
So the way that the equipment works is that we typically do the testing from one of the abutting neighborhoods, neighbors' houses. So usually, it's the neighbor that has brought forward the concern. And we usually go into their backyard to do it. We go on some of the days when there is regular ambient noise, right, and basically do a reading then and determine what their, their regular, normal ambient reading is. Because you may have, for instance, air conditioning units running in someone's house or the regular truck traffic, exactly. So they do an ambient reading. And then they go back during events. So they'll go for the Father's Day event. And I assume they actually will go for a few other events as well, since you do know we're coming on Father's Day, so it's the worst inspection ever. But we'll do readings.
But it might be appropriate for me to have a quieter Father's Day.
Of course. So we'll be doing readings at those, at events in order to determine what the decibel level is.
And how long do you stay on site?
Um, so typically, it's a short reading. They'll come in the kind of mid-event. And so it's not the beginning and not at the end. That's typically how I've seen it done.
Do we send someone to mail them?
Yeah, we do. Brian's going to go and do it. It's not me. Yeah, they won't want me to have any of the fun. When I spoke with Brian this morning, he had already scheduled the inspection. Yeah. So, and he's the best, so we know he will. Yeah.
I guess I struggle with approving all of these dates at once without a little more, I guess, without those studies, without maybe suggesting that you go back specifically to these same two neighbors we keep hearing from. If you haven't had contact specifically with them, I would really encourage that. And, I mean, I want these events to happen. We love to attend them. But I really struggle with it being at the expense of the neighbors.
It's called quiet enjoyment of their own property.
Yeah.
I don't know. I, but I, so I just think it's hard for me to approve all at once.
Well, there's, I mean, two thoughts coming right. One is, these don't run till 10:00 o'clock. They run to 8:00 o'clock. So, you know, we have, you know, we've dialed that back a bit. And I get it. I mean, whether it's 8:00 or 6:00, you're still next door. But it is 8:00, not 10:00. That said, how about a compromise of, it gives us a focal point, which is let, why don't we do this through July? And that gives us some opportunity to measure, to have those contacts. Right now, you've got, you know, very specific feedback as to who gives you opportunity to do that, gives us opportunity to execute this. And then let's come back in July. Hopefully, that's all done. We've got results here. We've got the communication. And that wraps up the rest of the summer. So just break it in half. How's that sound?
So we're not approving the functions. We're just approving a liquor license at these functions.
Well, I understand, but if you don't have.
The functions are already approved. We've already got entertainment licenses that have been approved.
But, but if you, if you, if you pull that liquor license, you're, you're undermining some of the value of the proposition.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I mean, the events can still go on, whether they have a license going on.
Right.
That's a point well taken.
I'm just trying to come up with a way to.
Well, let me, let me just take the liberty while you think on that to read the letter that we did receive. Gosh, I hope, about the, it's broken down into different categories. So the Wood Lane neighbors, buffer plantings have been installed and continue to be expanded along the Wood Lane and Wood Lane property lines. Faulkner Field perimeter trails are being maintained to allow walkers to access the property near Duffin Court and Andover Street, as well as reach the parking area and gateway without use of Wood Lane. Old Village Lane neighbors, buffer plantings have been installed at the Finner Property Line. Our property manager met with the Finesse, Ann Jean Enright, on Thursday, June 3rd, and we reached an agreeable solution to the family's concerns. We are moving forward with those plans. Noise level, Stevens Coolidge staff have been in conversations since March 21st with Timothy, Timothy, I don't know how to pronounce that, Folks, Principal Consultant in Architectural Acoustics and Noise Control, to conduct an independent sound study, a study date of July 9th for our first picnic concert of the season has been proposed. Also, the concert setups will be in alignment with the agreed-upon terms from last year's entertainment license discussion. And we are eager to ensure that the Stevens Coolidge remains a treasured community resource for generations to come. Welcome the ongoing conversations and partnerships to deliver that intention. Was there a letter in front of this to a part that I skipped over? Or was this basically it?
Basically, there was a few other notes about pedestrian access from Andover Street.
Yes, right. You know what, I probably didn't just make it through the printer.
Oh.
And I grabbed it and out the door I went. Would you like to speak to that a little bit, if you, that, the parts that you can remember?
The pedestrian, oh, sure. Oh, and timing. I think timing was probably the biggest or fastest response we could make. So with the new announcement of operating hours of 10 to 4, the, it was very quick and clear and kind of unanimous feedback from the community that 4 was too early. So we immediately changed to a 6:00 p.m. We've staffed that now, as well as opened the, that little white gate across from the crosswalk where our old parking lot was, so that pedestrian access can be made from the Old Town Center and surrounding neighborhoods. We've also added, just to make better connections with Franklin across the street, added the stewardship around our bird habitat trails adjacent to the garden part of the property, so that people can access, or pedestrian access there as well. So just continuing to, yeah, expand multiple access points to the property for walkers.
And is, and is there a fee involved for that access?
No.
But the fee is involved for?
For the manicured garden portion. And then the third phase is, hopefully, we'll begin planning this fall for the other side of 125. So the property is kind of split in half by 125 for more manicured trails in the approximately 50 acres on the other side of 125 for free and open pedestrian and potentially a few parking space access.
You know, you're certainly entitled to run the business the, the way, you know, the Stevens Coolidge sees fit. But it might be a nice gesture to give free passes to the abutters, everyone, you know, the paid passes.
Agreed.
This is not uncommon in industry where people, where the industry could be noisy or, not in your case, but noxious with smells and things, that they, the owners and the business people that run those facilities literally do give free, free passes or just thank yous. I'm making this a suggestion. It's certainly not to be delivered that you must do it. This has to come from you. But it certainly would carry, I think, some goodwill with the neighbors, especially direct abutters.
I will say that we were going to offer free trustees' memberships to about 30 abutters and found that most of them already were members. So it felt kind of like an empty gesture. So we, I'm going to just be giving out, you know, free passes to all the concerts all summer. And then, of course, all the free passes that we gave to the library. So even if you aren't an abutter, you can still enjoy the property free of charge.
And I did see that you did make, you have offerings to people that might not be able to afford through a different, you know, different program, which speaks to, I think, the real nature of the Stevens Coolidge and the original donation towards, to the trustees or however it was acquired, that it's meant to allow everybody to be involved and enjoy, even if you're not a family of means or fallen on some difficult times. And it also teaches our children to respect, you know, all the beautiful open space and wildlife and planting. So I like the fact that you are considering that. And I do think that, that when, and I guess I would probably speak for the whole board, it is certainly a measure of goodwill during some of these rocky times between Stevens Coolidge and, and the abutters. So.
Agreed.
Having said that, so you've had.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
On the community picnic on the 27th, is that also a concert or a band? Or is that just a Father's Day picnic? And also, I think one of the concerns from the abutter is visibility of their property from the pedestrians coming in or the attendees coming in. Is there a way that you can somehow screen that property? I mean, is there some tasteful thing we can, that you can put up to kind of screen that property in that section so that they don't see, have a direct line of sight into the neighbor's backyard?
I think that's been part of the conversation, where we've put up like a multi-tier screening of like trees and shrubbery. But then also the beauty of living next to the properties that you get to see the space. So like a, a more permanent or completely blocked view hasn't been appealing. But I think we can, you know, there's still room for something maybe temporary or just conversational.
Temporary, just, I think what the comment was that, you know, they like to enjoy their property for Father's Day without having folks, you know, looking into the yard and everything. So maybe if there was some kind of a screening, that could go off temporarily. And also the question, is there music involved in the 27th as well as our band? Or is that?
Sorry, can you say the date again?
The 27th. I see, I see community picnics on June 27th. Is that Father's Day?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, sorry. No, we're just hosting a series of free community days this summer for surrounding town residents. And so they don't necessarily have music. I'd say only one does because someone.
So you don't have anything going on Father's Day?
Did you?
Oh, Father's Day, we have the annual picnic.
The last meeting.
Sorry, then June 27th, I think is Methuen is our featured town. So like Thwaites and a Methuen Bakery will come. And so we'll have Methuen vendors and residents.
I was wondering when the Father's Day thing, the comment was.
No, we just, I applied for that alcohol permit because we have some breweries that would want to be on site at the same time, but not breweries and music. but not breweries and music.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
So, um, I read, I guess, a portion of the letter. Um, thoughts from the board?
I mean, I feel as if they're compromised that we approve partial dates and get some feedback.
A little slower and then go forward. And, and I agree. And I think, you know, this is at least a start of a measure of goodwill and building, building the relationship back with the neighbors and trying to be sensitive to every, you know. Well, we'll see. We'll see how this test goes.
The, the question I would have is obviously these are concerts, so those concerts involve musicians. Musicians have to be booked in advance. So if we're not approving, um, all of these dates, you know, does that compromise the ability to book the bands and everything? You know, that's my, that would be a concern.
It's just the liquor though, right?
It's just the liquor, yeah. But as you said, without the liquor, everything else falls apart, so. I don't know why it shouldn't, but.
So do you?
When is our July meeting, Lauren?
We have one June 28th, so that would be after Father's Day, so we could bring it back on the June 28th meeting. In July 12th.
Okay, if we bring it back on June 28th.
Okay, so, do we have a motion?
So the motion would be to approve, um, the summer picnic concerts on July 9th, 16th, 23rd and 30th. The community picnic on June 27th and July 18th, and that would be, we'd stop at that point. So that, that would be my motion.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did you make a motion already?
Yeah, you kind of did.
No, we're just chatting, we're chatting about it, but your motion is good.
It's yours. He likes it.
Do we want you to go on the night evidence, five to eight?
Yes, I'm sorry, five to eight on the July 9th, 16th, 23rd and 30th, and then, um, five to eight PM. And then on the June 27th and July 18th, 2021, it would be from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Are you seconding that?
Second.
You've been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
We got ourselves.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. It's nice to see you. You too. Okay, I want to entertain a motion.
I'm opposed to the meeting of, uh, not under licensing permission.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now out of licensing.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, consent. We have requested the police department to surplus three vehicles. That is kind of our standard process here. These are old.
They're a little bit older. Old Cruisers, yep.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, and then we've got, that's the next part on the side. Uh, waiver, affordable unit resale waiver for the right of first refusal at Eight Compass Point, again, standard. And then we have accepting donations to the youth center for the 2021 summer shows on the Common. And these are donations from Premier Lending of $1,000. Butcher Boy, uh, for $200. Trombley Brothers for 50. St. Michael's Parish for $500. And Andover Pest Control, Inc. for $200. And that helps us get our shows on the Common. So those are our consent items for tonight.
And that is great. It's starting to feel more normal with having the fun events and stuff. We're, we're getting with the, the different events already scheduled. It's starting to feel. We're getting there for sure.
I just need a motion for approval of those?
I move approval.
Any other discussion? And then we'll send a thank you out to those, uh, for those donations. That's, that's great. Much appreciated. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, vote, cast five zero. Uh, approval of our minutes for the open session of May 24th, 2021. We've all got these in our packet. Any changes or additions for anyone? Okay, well, there are motion then?
Chair, I move approval of the minutes from May 24th, 2021, as written.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Got it. Okay. All right, and now we're on to, um, we've got our review and to make our recommendation on zoning Article 31, which is an amendment to the zoning bylaw. A lot of technical changes. Article six, which is signs, sign lighting and restrictions.
Yeah, the planning board had made a few additional amendments since the last time that you voted to recommend the articles. We want to bring it back before you. They added a couple of lines. Um, there's a few areas where signs were created almost kind of site-specific through zoning, and we just wanted to make sure that this didn't supersede any of those. Um, one in particular is the Amazon sign. Um, so we just want to make sure we weren't, we weren't undoing what had been done. So it just was fixing that.
Great, great.
So it's more housekeeping.
More housekeeping. Be nice and clean when we're done, but.
So, what do you need from us to vote?
Uh, I just want you to re-recommend that one. So a motion to.
Make a motion to, for favorable action on Article 31, as amended.
I'll second that.
Great. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Favorable action recommended, five zero.
So you have not yet taken a position on Article, it's bad when I don't remember them all by heart yet. Article 24, which was the transfer fund from free cash to fiscal year 2021, general fund for COVID. We are working on closing out the fiscal year. I think we're probably not going to need the article. We've got about a $300,000 delta right now. We had a staff meeting today where we basically said, please, 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 close out all your conferences, close out your POs, we know if we need this article or not. I think we'll probably just have a meeting right before the meeting, um, just to, to decide. But my gut is right now that we're gonna withdraw. So just so you know. That's the only article that you have not taken a position on yet, um, so we just wanted to bring that up. The other thing I wanted to discuss, in conversations with the chair, uh, it became apparent that there may be some interest among the board for doing a presentation for the housing forum. Um, and so staff, the housing moratorium, we had a housing forum, that already happened. So staff and I worked on a presentation for you to give if you so choose. Um, I did forward that to you earlier today, um, so that you could take a look at it. I'm happy to present it to you right now if that's the way that you want to, to, would you like me to do that?
Yeah, I think that's pretty good with that. Okay.
Let me try to cast. We'll see how we do here. Ooh, it worked. Okay. So I'm gonna run through this as quickly as I can, and then we can kind of talk about what you want to do, if you even want to present it, how you want to present it. I am gonna move my, um, chair because it's on a piece of paper and it's gonna drive me crazy. If you all watched Finance Committee last night, you saw me wrestling with my dog through half of the meeting. So this is an improvement from that. I was, he would not stop barking. So, this is, um, Article 32, Housing Moratorium Town Meeting 2021, and a potential presentation from the select board noting that, um, while we are recommending, um, support of the article, there is one member who is not recommending support, and so that's a logistic that you do need to discuss. Um, and so this is kind of a summary chart, which talks about the impact issues of the moratorium. So basically stating that the, the way we see it is that there's impacts to fiscal, the housing production plan, I see a few errors I gotta fix, but master plan implementation, the housing choice, community designation, the lasting impact from a pause request, permanent reputational risk and fairness and opportunity. I will add that, um, the chair did make some changes to this that you will see throughout. Particularly, the two of us got extra confused at the chart, but I think we worked it out in the end. And so the moratorium impacts generally, and, and just explaining basically what it would do. It would stop any new market rate development of three families or more. It would not stop, as we know, any affordable housing developments under misuse general law, chapter 40B. It would not stop commercial growth, including hotels, retail or restaurants, although obviously there is some concern about, um, being friendly to development. It does not affect any nonprofits or educational institutions projects. It does not appropriate funds for any studies. And it does have impacts on some small projects. So we have a, right now, a, a three to four family residential adaptive reuse conversion that recently was approved by the ZBA and the planning board, is still pending approval by the Conservation Commission and Historic District. And it would kind of stop some of those smaller projects that I'm not sure, um, was the original intent. One thing I think we should talk about when we talk about 40B is, is where we are right now with our subsidized housing unit. So the last time that we got an official number from DHCD was in 2010, right? And we will soon get it again. Unfortunately, the, um, census numbers are actually delayed about seven months. So typically, we would have already gotten our 2020 census numbers, but we're seeing a federal delay. Kind of interesting, right? So, right, it's a little bit, it is a little bit scary. So, um, the official number we got from DHCD at that point in 2020 was, was 8.7%. We calculate that we think we're probably more around 7.97% based on what's been built. Although the census numbers could obviously change that. One of the things for.
As of right now.
As of right now, the 7.97.
There's no thoughts towards a projection of what they could be. Because we don't have any, we don't have the census.
Because we don't have the census data yet.
Sometimes there's a sense of.
Yeah, it's frustrating. I mean, we can't use, I would advise against using what we collect for town census data because people don't respond, um, as much as they do with the federal. So it's much lower than what, what we'll get from our federal numbers. So one of the things that we'd be doing with that 40B consultant that we have on the CPC application this year is projecting, not just helping to recalculate our 10% based on what we're seeing, but also calculating for 2030, 2040 and 2050 so that we don't see ourselves in this situation again. So.
We won't see ourselves? I don't know about you. I don't think I'm gonna be your route way for the.
I might. I don't know.
I hope you are.
So one of the other points is that, um, the sentiment of the board could be that this is not necessary. So most of our new large multifamily housing developments, other than those 40Bs, typically do require a town meeting to approve zoning changes for them to be built. So town meeting already does have considerable control over the fate of multifamily developments. So we know the Minko Project, the Avalon Project, Princeton Properties, all needed town meeting approval for zoning. We went forward with the Royal Crest redevelopment project that we discussed earlier tonight. That obviously would require a zoning change. All a moratorium would do is stop building that could happen by rights. So that means it's already allowed by zoning. Um, and so there already is control that is held by town meeting. The next thing we want to talk about was the impacts on the financials. And so we build our budget, as you know, under the constraints of Proposition 2 and a half, which means that our tax levy can increase by two and a half percent plus new growth. That new growth number is typically, um, new construction or redevelopment of current properties. We typically estimate in a year $650,000 in new growth, and that really is based on the calculation of single-family homes. Any new growth that's beyond that number is deemed extraordinary new growth by us and typically comprises of multifamily or commercial. So if we keep that new growth number at 650, um, the budget can increase typically by about 3.2% per year. A budget increase of 3.2% is a level service budget for the school department. And as we know, we have been forecasting increased needs over the next seven years. So without that new growth, the tax impact of those needs would fall squarely on our current taxpayers. I did look back, um, at new growth for over the last kind of five-year period. The last three years, we've seen extraordinary new growth. We've had kind of, uh, strange projects coming on. We've had more commercial than we typically would have, um, which has been great. Looking back to when things were a little bit more level, in 2017, our new growth number was actually 570,000. And in 2016, it was 630,000, more around the line of where we would see, typically see it. For 2021, it was 969,000. One of the things I think is really interesting about this is that I don't think we would see the new growth impacted quickly. I think it would be more of a long-term impact. Because when you think about it, we, we typically see a project to have about, you know, a year to two years of planning before our, um, the town property, town committees and town meeting before it moves forward. So I think this impact would really be seen more like two years plus out. The other thing I thought was really interesting and actually popped in my head, we were talking earlier about the Royal Crest project, is that of our 10 highest taxpayers in town, four of them are actually apartment buildings. So, so pretty, pretty interesting to think about how that multifamily actually impacts, um, our budget. The other, um, important point I think to make is that the studies dictated by the article during the moratorium, well costly and, um, obviously not in appropriation, um, within the article, have really all been completed, um, other than the sewer and water capacity study, which we have committed to doing. So obviously, we have a master plan that's in its implementation period, and that, while addressing really everything in the town, also addresses the historical, cultural, natural resources that, that the, um, quote in the article. We have the Merrimack Valley Priority Growth Strategy, our school capacity study, which we just completed. And we do know that enrollment has, has been decreasing actually in recent years. In 2017, we had 4,766 students. In 2021, we actually only have 4,510. Pretty interesting. The Open Space and Recreation Plan, the finalizing right now, the Lake Chikowit, I did it right again. Watershed Plan, the Housing Production Plan is valid through 2022. We're just finished our MVP, as you all know, our MVP program and our All Hazards Mitigation Plan. We have a quote now to do the sewer and water capacity study. It is about $80,000. We're, we're looking to use the consultant that is finalizing the watershed plan because they already have a lot of our data. So we're moving forward with that. We have fiscal impact analysis that we have been doing on many of our projects. We have finalized Facilities Master Plan 1, and as we all know, Facilities Master Plan 2 is coming close to fruition. Um, I think the next thing we could do is talk about the Housing Production Plan and what that says. And so, um, one of the findings of the, the Housing Production Plan is that elderly households and small families are really the most burdened by housing costs in North Andover. And it talks about, you know, in, in the Housing Production Plan, how our low vacancy rates and, um, continued, potential continued growth of population health in the coming years, our need to be best addressed through a combination of conversion of our existing housing stock as well as affordable new housing production of market rate, yeah, low, and affordable housing. One of the interesting things that I heard from 2019 data, uh, actually at the housing forum, is that we currently have an ownership vacancy rate of 2.7% and a rental vacancy rate of 3.5%. And according to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, it's actually a 7% vacancy rate is deemed to be healthy. The Housing Production Plan calls for the town to encourage adaptive reuse and redevelopment, consider zoning revisions to encourage more housing types, support the elderly age in place, consider high-density zoning where appropriate, encourage development of housing that is affordable and encourages us to rehabilitate and reuse substandard structures. Another thing that I thought was really interesting in both the Housing Production Plan, but also updated by, um, by the housing forum the other day, and this is where Chris and I got, got ourselves all kind of twisted up, is that we do have a true housing affordability gap. And so the cost of the average median home in North Andover is 622,000. The whole, the median home, the price of a home that a resident could afford in North Andover, based on the median household income, is actually only 419,000, which means that we have a $230,000 affordability gap in our housing stock. So the median household income in North Andover right now is $108,700. Based on the 2019 census, um, projections, the income needed to afford the median home at the $622,000 number is actually $130,000. And so that's what leads to that affordability gap. I'd have.
Is this with the, the current interest rates?
So.
There's a lot more.
That's an interesting question.
You know, did, as that take it into account? Because as of right now, the, the rate is below 3%.
That's a really interesting question, and I'll look at that. These are updated and everything they just did for the housing forum, but I'll ask you if they, I'll ask them if they took that into account.
Isn't that based on the percentage of your income? Like you should really only be spending.
It's about 36 to 38 if you're.
That's even high.
If you have no debt, it's 40.
That's high.
Actually, the number, the number's 45%. That's the standard, that's the industry standard that all your long-term debt, which is your housing payments, anything that takes more than 10 months to pay off, shouldn't be more than 45%. That's the general rule. So when you kind of look at it in terms of interest rates, you know, there's some people, you know, kind of all washes out. Basically, we're at the most affordable point right now. So in some ways, this understates historically how large that gap is because you're at the cheapest part of interest rates. If you look at this historically, and look at the average interest rate, sorry, um, for the last three years, that gap would be larger because the cost of financing the house. So it's a chase game now. As house prices go up, interest rates start to move up, that gap actually starts to get bigger. But it's a fair point to bring up.
Really interesting, yeah. I had to go into Larry after I finished this graph and say, does this make sense? Does it make sense in my head? And, good, I'm glad. All right. So then additionally, we know we've done the master plan, um, and we've completed that in 2018. We had two public forums that were attended by 260 people, focus groups, informational interviews, online research where we had 200 survey responses and bi-monthly committee meetings. And one of the, the goals of the master plan was really talking about making housing affordable and accessible. And it calls on the town to really update our zoning bylaw, to promote mixed uses in areas such as downtown, Route 114, Route 125 and Sutton Street. And it talks a lot about how North Andover has always favored single-family housing developments, and we've really left a gap in that market for smaller units. So as our senior population continues to increase and we want them to age in place, we want to encourage that, we're not seeing those smaller units available.
Actually, two, a couple of numbers to tie into that. So 54% of the households in North Andover have either one or two occupants. Yet only. Yet only 10% of the units in town are studio and one-bedroom, and 63% are three or more bedrooms. So there's a disconnect in terms of the supply with what you would generally match for the household size. Just kind of ties into that.
Something you're going to know about Mary soon, now that you've got to graduate.
That's a button.
Um, and then the Master Plan Implementation Committee, which is obviously very actively working, um, is, is planning on attending town meeting and speaking for themselves as well. But we do have this, just talking about the work that they have done, um, in doing analysis of the proposed moratorium article. And then finally, uh, one of the things that I, I think is concerning to me is that North Andover is one of 78 communities to achieve the Housing Choice designation. It's a designation that we apply for every year. Um, in order to get this designation, you have to have produced a certain rate or amount of new housing units within a five-year period, and you have to have adopted best practices related to housing production. Communities that have this designation have exclusive access to capital grants, up to $250,000 a year, through the Housing Choice Program. And we also receive bonus points, um, for other state grants, such as MassDOTs, MassWorks, the one Andrew was talking about tonight. Um, so we just put that application in on Friday for approximately $2 million, and we have a priority designation because we're a Housing Choice community, um, which is, is really exciting. Unfortunately, if you have a moratorium, you are not eligible to be part of that program. So we know that we'll have a potential loss of at least $500,000 in grant revenue, um, by putting a moratorium forward. And then finally, just thinking about, um, the fairness and equity question. Um, the Attorney General may deem some forms of a housing moratorium to be legal. And right now, I think that's kind of up in the air a little bit because of the new Housing Choice legislation. Um, and that's why I'll be curious to see what happens with that. Um, but one of the things that we, we do see from a housing moratorium and that you can find in the research that you do is that when housing demand outpaces the supply, which is what we're seeing, the home prices and the cost of rent increase, which makes our available housing less attainable and less affordable. And additionally, we often see missed opportunities for jobs, taxes, and other benefits of new housing. One thing that's really interesting is that we have, um, the new Housing Choice legislation that was passed last year. And under that, the MBTA communities, which we are one of, will actually have to increase our availability of multifamily housing within Arizona. So within the next, I think, 18 months or two years, we're required to do a zoning study and create more by-right zoning. Um, and so we're kind of doing the opposite of what the state is calling us to do. And then finally, um, obviously, we, we have just the kind of a summary, um, slide. So I don't know if this is helpful or not, um, and I recognize that it is, um, a difficult situation for all of you because we do have a split board. But I did want to be able to give you the tool if you do want to present, um, to the, the meeting.
Let me just ask you one thing, though, and you would probably know the number because we, we've discussed it before. We're one of the fastest-growing communities in the entire state. Uh, do you know what percentage or rank we are of that? I mean, where does that come into play for some of these programs and stuff? Do they give us no, like, well, you do a moratorium, you're out? Or you don't take into account that we are one of the fastest-growing? I mean, that just, there seems to be an unfairness to that.
They don't.
We've already been, we've already been dealing with it. And, and then just because you don't, you don't comply with a couple of years and you're, you're not eligible? Where, where were they when we really needed them?
So I think, it's interesting. They, they're very clear in their application, um, and in their guidelines that if you have a moratorium, you're out. Um, I actually didn't realize it until we were going to put this one-stop-growth application in on Friday. Um, and I was going back to make sure that all, because we have to apply annuals, so I was making sure that everything was in order. And I was like, oh, that's a problem. Um, what I will say is that the Housing Production Plan actually talks a lot about growth. And I thought, I, I had thought the same thing, and I had heard the same thing a lot. And then I, I read this quote in the Housing Production Plan, and I was like, that's really interesting. "All 15 communities in the Merrimack Valley region had estimated population growth between 2000 and 2015 with average growth rates of 8.75% and median growth rates of 9.38%." North Andover's estimated population growth in that period was actually only 7.6%. So we actually were growing slower than the other communities in the Merrimack Valley.
But statewide?
It, it may be true statewide, um, and I can certainly look into that. But I, I, when I read that, I was like, huh, that's interesting.
But to be honest, even when you add all the communities up and all of this, pretty much an accelerated rate perhaps than the rest of the state, I don't think all of us being fast-growth communities certainly helps with, with other issues that you face with that, like traffic. Did you catch my point in my statement this late? I think it compounds it.
And I hear you. Uh, but I think we all need to appreciate the fact that we're 20 miles outside Boston. And the reason that we're growing is because the jobs are here, right?
Well, it's not just that, we're one of the few communities, let's think about this a moment. One of the few communities, as you said, commutable from, from Bo, from Boston, that still has a little bit of land. They don't run into the same issues in communities like Swampscott, Marblehead, probably Winchester. They're all built out. So we are taking the brunt, and it's concerning.
Well, I would argue that, we, I do a ton of work in the Cape Town area. They're building all the time. We're doing multifamilies. They're putting multifamilies up in Marblehead now, too. Uh, they just are. It's just, it's, it's just the way it is, mixed.
Not to, not to the extent that we are. They just don't have the land.
We haven't put up, there was this, we didn't put up anything between 1000 and 2015.
Let me find that. I think I skimmed that over with the last bullet. Yeah.
We only put up 32 multifamily units. So, in some essence, we're catching up. And there was, if you go back even further historically, we didn't approve anything in North Andover and Andover, and it got pushed to our neighbor.
And I look at people, just young people from North Andover who would like to live in North Andover but can't. I mean, they look at housing, and they try to buy a house in North Andover, and they're getting, you know, outbid 10 times over, over the, the asking price of the house. And they just cannot get a house in, or a place to live in North Andover because they, it's so competitive out there, and a young family is just not able to do it. I think when we reduce the housing options, we end up, you know, locking out our own young people as well as our 55-plus who would like to stay in North Andover, maybe sell the house with three bedrooms and move to a place where they can, you know, have a smaller, you know, or obviously a smaller living place. But we're, we're, you know, confining our own residents by not being able to allow. I mean, I know, I've got members of my family that would love to move back to North Andover, but there's just no housing that they can get in, you know, into because of the competitive aspect of buying a house right now. It's really concerning.
It's, it's, it's a fairness in it. We have, I guess the thing that strikes me to that, Dick, is we have the capacity to find a way to make this work. Right, we've got processes here that protect our resources and our institutions here, and, uh, a process for zoning, for, um, that whole process that has been in place and works for us well. And we're right in the middle of it with a very large project. So it's, I think we're, we've got tools here to, to execute the reality out there, which is, communities grow. In 50 years, this will be an unrecognizable community, just the way 50 years ago. Today would be absolutely unrecognizable. That's the reality of it. But I think what, uh, I, I, I think what we're finding today is that there are mechanisms to help communities get through that growth as opposed to it being sort of random before. And I think th- there's some carrots and there's some sticks, and then there's sort of a moral obligation here that I think we, we take on. And, and, um, this in some ways is a very good conversation for us to have, uh, as a community because it really speaks to, do we really want to be an inviting community? Or do we really want to say, nimby? Do we really want to say, you know what, no, we, we just got to have it the way, way it is? And I think, I think we embrace growth with these sort of tools here. So that's, at least that's the way I feel about it.
And then finally, I think we have, not finally, but obviously my final comments, I think we have boards in place that do a great job in trying to regulate and trying to control the density and like we've had tonight. I mean, we're not just saying to Royal Crest, yes, I mean, not Royal Crest, but Trinity, yeah, come on, do this. We are pushing back hard on what we are trying to get. We, and to their credit, they're, they're looking at our master plan. They're trying to match what we stated and what the town stated in the master plan. You know, the other thing is, you know, we, we live in America. People buy property. They have a right to work on their property within, within the law, within the zoning law. And when they're outside the zoning law, we have processes for that. And one of them is to go to town meeting and get approval from the town. Um, so I think the checks and balances are in place already.
I don't think that the nimby thing is, is necessarily the correct word. I think it needs to be planned, purposeful growth and not huge developments in tight areas that just bring tremendous amounts of traffic. That's, that's the point. It just needs to be, we can't just have, um, you know, just a sudden increase in people and traffic and density. And we know, we, we know some of the projects that are in place now that are pretty dense and pretty tight. So I don't think it's necessarily nimby. Um, it's being purposeful and, and measured.
But, but those projects went through the process. They went through the planning board, they went through the zoning board. I, I'm sorry, I was, I interrupted you. They went through the planning board, they went through the zoning board, and they went to town meeting and got voted on. So they did go through a purposeful process. Um, some people don't like them, I get it. Um, some people don't like what happened at Fajetta's Farm. I understand that. But again, it was a property that was for sale for a very long time. And fine, and there was, you know, there was a desire to have something built out on that property. And, um, we all, we've discussed it over many years, and, and here it is. And it did go through that process. And, you know, others have gone through it as well.
And it's okay not to agree. And actually, we're doing a really good job of it, which is so impressive. But it's okay for us not to agree on this. It really is. And I think, you know, the important part is that everyone's voices are heard, right? Um, and that we figure out kind of how we want to present this at a town meeting without, you know, and I think that you guys have done a really good job of, of having a really respectful debate, which is good.
So how do we present this? If this is what we want to present, I guess that's a question one, is, is this what we want to present? Two, how, how do we do this, recognizing that we've got three, maybe up to five minutes?
Three to five minutes.
That's what the town moderator would be giving for this. So if we're in agreement, this is what we want to present. I guess, A, are there any volunteers? Or B, alternatively, what's, what are some ideas for presenting?
I know, I need Chris to present it, but I think we need to pare it down if we're only going to get three to five minutes. I know that you had presented as chair.
Can we realistically accept this, but then it take things out of it between now and, okay?
So this is, this is what's in the packet, but we might speak to only portions of it, okay? Which I think is a good point, right?
Yes. But, but it's okay for all of this to be out there, as far as I'm-
This is our-
As far as I see it, I think it's important that all of this is out there. As someone who has only ever lived in multifamily housing in North Andover, I find this very important discussion. And who wouldn't be able to live here, uh, wouldn't be able to afford to live here otherwise, so.
So there's, there's a couple of ways that we could do this. Um, and I've seen it done many ways. Um, the, the four of you could choose to, to give the presentation together. Obviously, Rosemary, we would not ask you to put yourself in that position ever.
I have no problem with the board doing it. I'm a huge supporter of freedom of speech and people's rights to opinion, so I would never-
We would never want to put you in an awkward position.
On somebody's rights.
So I could assign, I could easily go through, assign slides, or talk to each of you about what you kind of are interested in, in doing. And then you could do it collectively, which is a really amazing message. We could assign it to Chris and, um, but what we cannot do is we cannot all collectively work on this document, right? Because that would be a violation. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm happy to handle it either way.
I mean, I, I appreciate the nomination, but I do kind of, I think, um, there's always a challenge, you know, you kind of four people up there and sort of that message. But I, I, I do, I've heard from us that there are very, there are pieces of this that really speak to our individual experience and heart. And I think it would be great if respectively each of us could speak to that. Um, it's, it's our, it's a one opportunity. That's sort of how I look at it. I don't know how other-
It, it seems like we have three to five minutes trying to hand things off between people. It is going to take a long time to, you know, it's going to chew up that time, so.
We'll, we'll ask the moderator to give us transition time. But I, no, it's, that's a fair consideration, Dick. And I, I, you know, I, I understand it. I just think this is a very personal thing. And so that's where I'm, um, fall back to the possibility of, you know, broader participation. I think has, 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 has value. But I'll leave, you know, it's a board, so it's us as a group, you know? What's the consensus of the team?
As much as I would like to avoid standing up and talking at town meeting, I would happily, um, I think presenting as a board is really meaningful for us. So I would be willing to-
So I suggest we, we wouldn't stand, we would just stay seated and flip through the-
And whittle this down to something that-
Yeah.
We know that the Master Plan Implementation Committee is giving their own presentation. So perhaps that's a great place to start cutting out, right?
Yeah.
We can do that.
And, and that-
Or keep in the graph, because that took me a long time to figure out.
No, no, I know. Just, just the confusion part alone, let alone what you took to get it.
Right.
That's impactful.
It is.
They might also be able to address the studies because that's part of the master plan.
They can definitely study the master, do the master plan, so I can talk with them. I mean, I wouldn't take out the concern studies-
No, not take it out, but-
But we could definitely ask, I could ask them if they'd be willing to handle the entire master plan section.
I think we can keep it in, we could keep it in here, I'm just saying we don't have to speak to it.
Right.
Right, so that's what we're talking about, keep it in here but not speaking to it. Summary page, the impacts.
You know what would work really well? Why don't we take this and break it into sections? And someone, everyone can tell me what section they want to work on, and then I can work individually with you on your section. Um, so my thought was that Chris would open it, um, and he could handle the first three pages, which basically was kind of the summary, which you're probably not going to read, but you could get into the moratorium impacts and the necessity for it.
Yep.
So those first two. Um, Laura, if you would take on the financial and the studies? Okay, and the housing production plan. That work for you? Dick, if you could then pull into that chart? Okay, and then talk a little bit about the master plan. I think that would be really helpful, um, because you were on the planning board. Okay, were you on the planning board when they did the, you were on zoning? Sorry, I always think you were on the planning board.
I was on this board when we did the master.
Okay, so at least you would have that history, um, okay. And then Janice, we could pivot to you for the Housing Choice community and the policy. Does that work?
So, um, who would talk to the board's work and the, and the, um, town meeting? Was that you, Chris? That would be?
He would basically do the opening.
Just the, it would just be the impacts?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Right?
Yep, and then Janice could close it out.
Yep, and then Janice, you get, you get to be the closer.
Is there somewhere in here where we talk about the work of the zoning board, the Conservation Commission, and the, and the planning board?
Not, not directly, Dick, but it's a fair, where would we?
I mean, I, I would gladly slide a slide between nine and 10, or maybe-
Yeah?
Perfect.
To talk about that.
All right, so I'll work with you on that. So process, process slide, okay.
Yeah, it's important that we talk about the fact that we have it placed already.
We talk about on page, or maybe I just talk about it, on the not necessary page? Page two, where we, uh, we talk about, um, the fact that they already go through town meeting, but we don't talk about the more comprehensive. So I think if you could address that, that would be good.
Yeah.
Okay. So I can work with you on that. All right, so I sent you all these slides in non-editable fashions that we would not have any violations of the open meeting law. Um, but I'm happy to work with each of you and make that work.
I appreciate you facilitating the jugs. It's like a moving juggling act. But thank you. Okay, good. Tom, is there anything that we've missed, with your, anything else happening?
No, really slow. No, but we, uh, we only have 11 COVID cases right now, which is really exciting. So we're, we're heading in the right direction. All of our buildings are open. The library is open till 9:00 PM through Thursday if people are hot. Um, and so we did post that yesterday as a cooling center. If you want to go to the library, it's cool. You can plug your devices in, um, and so please feel free to stop by there if it's warm.
Wonderful.
And that's it.
Wonderful. Uh, select board updates?
Congratulations to the graduates.
Your own graduates?
Yeah, yeah.
It was wonderful. Such a great-
Such a great night.
Was, was.
Happy Father's Day to all those fathers and husbands out there. Is there anything else?
I can't think of anything.
No? I'd just say again, thank you, North Andover School District, and it was a great, thank you for those that attended the graduation, and Tom Azure to here on our car parade